All right, it is 6:30, so let's get this party started here. Roll call. Mayor Proketa Villalobos.
Here.
Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Shell Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Bucla.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And Mayor Devaney is present. We have a full contingency. Let's please stand, rise and say that I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
To the righteous stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. First thing on the agenda tonight is public comments. Now, if y'all read the agenda notices, of course, we typically only take 10 comments, but tonight we've got more than that. So I don't want to cut anybody out. The other thing is, is it states in the thing that at the beginning here, we're going to go take public comments on things that are not on the agenda. We actually only have one of those, so we're going to go ahead and do that. And then, when we get to the agenda item that pertains to the rest of these comments, we're going to go do this, do this again. Comments that came in before noon today, we will read those. I'll read those. People who submitted those and wanted to read their own, which we have one of, is welcome to go do that. And then following that, those who have signed up tonight here on site that want to go comment on that, we'll also give them an opportunity. There's about 14 or 15, but due to the interest in the discussion items tonight, I think that it's well worth the time to go ahead and go do that. We will hold these to three minutes and I'll be timing those, Jack, so you, like I told you, you speak quickly. And your time is about to start, so come to the podium, please. Jack wants to talk on our New Year's fireworks.
Yes, I have several questions for the city council. And they can answer the questions after I finish or later on during the week if they want to. I'd like to know who's going to be liable for anything that is damaged or done, since everybody knows how dry it is, caused by firecrackers. I think it's a city ordinance that there's no firecrackers popped in a set of limits. We have not had any law enforcement.
I lost audio.
We lost it.
Yeah. And I was praying that they wouldn't run through the fence to get all cut up or get out on the highway and get somebody hurt. Now, I want to know who's going to be liable if one of them does get out on the highway because of the firecrackers and gets hurt. I also have storage buildings. Hay stacked out there by the road. And my hay isn't but about 75 feet from my storage units. I want to know who's liable. Is it the police? Is it the city council, knowing how dry it is? Knowing that it's a city ordinance not to be happening. We have no law enforcement at my end of the town. Last year, Harry told me right in front of Sonia's house, right before the 4th of July, that the people knew not to pop firecrackers on the 4th of July. Well, lo and behold, they popped firecrackers loud and clear all night long. So what Harry tells them isn't always what they do. They need to, we need a law enforcement present. And I know a law enforcement, if there's just one, he can't be everywhere but once. But it seems like we have two law enforcement that work for the city of Martindale. If they can't work their schedule out on nights that we know we're going to have problems. And one be on one end of the town, one on the other, work together. And just giving warnings out through the flowers out, through the mail, does not cut the mustard. I'll tell you that. We had, we had a female on the police force years back, was the only person I know that enforced this. She wrote citations and when that happened, we did not have laws of firecrackers for several years. Now then, I know my time is up, but I'm going to say one more thing. Knowing and not having law and order in a little town like this is one reason people take law into their own hands. And that's a bad thing to do. So.
Jack, now that your time is up, appreciate it.
I'd like some answers.
Here. All right. Speaking of Jack's last comment, we're precluded from by law, from engaging during a public comment for something that is not on the agenda. So to Jack's point, we'll have to give him some answers to his questions, either offline or at the next council meeting, we'll be able to put that into.
Or during the week, I'll come out of the house.
All right. With that, we're moving on to agenda item number four now. Everybody understands that the rest of the public comments we're going to get to when we get to item number seven, which is on the agenda. Nobody's getting upset about that. Okay, the mayor's report.
Did you call a meeting for orders?
Yeah. COVID-19 still with us. Everybody sees a lot of stuff going on with the vaccines. There's two vaccines. One's now, in the past week, has been approved by the federal government. And they're rolling out those to different areas, mostly healthcare centers. Initially, the top three priorities are healthcare workers and assisted living kind of places, nursing homes and the like. The next group is, will be first responders. And then the next group will be people at risk, over 65s, medical conditions, et cetera. Hopefully, then after that, there will be vaccines made available to the general public. The point is, is that we've also had a skyrocketing in the last month in Texas. It looks to me like it may be leveling off along Texas lines. Caldwell County was in pretty good shape during that time period. But over the past week has jumped up significantly, so please do continue to practice good social distancing activities, wear your mask when you're out in public and just, just stay safe here right at the end. I think before it's all said and done, we may be able to get out of this, but it's not over yet. Second item on the, on the mayor's report, the council had an executive session on 12 and 1. This was to talk about a couple of things that had legal ramifications to them. The first, by law, we're required to go off and inform the public of what happened during those meetings. No actions, of course, were taken on either item. The first one had to do with the status of the Mayan development that's located in San Marcos. There is some legal things that the city entered into an agreement with the Mayans two years ago, and that's beginning to get wrapped up. It's not totally wrapped up yet, but that was just the status on that for the city council. The other one was the contractual agreement between us and the, our city attorney, which it is on the agenda. It was to approve a new letter of great engagement with him. And we're going to do that here at a little later agenda item tonight. Board and commission's vacancies were talked about, discussed at the last council meeting. One of the things that we were charged to do was to go make an announcement and get out there for people who wanted to volunteer for the Historic Preservation Commission and the Parks Advisory Board. There's two openings on each one of those. We posted that on our webpage, and when you got your bill tomorrow, you'll see it in the news from City Hall for those things as well. We also put, assigned some term expiration dates based on when they were originally applied. Our ordinance calls for two-year stints, and we tried to go make those as close as we could to what we think is what's going on. So those are also now on the webpage. All right. Now, let's see. The next thing on the agenda is the city administrator's report. You have.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak quickly. First, we got the Zoom equipment up and running, so those of you participating out there, hopefully the audio quality is better, the video quality is better. I know in here, the video quality is, it's working pretty well, so that's good news. The only other thing, actually, that's, that's going to be it tonight. I think that's, that's it for, for me.
The camera is here?
Yep, camera's up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. The next thing on the agenda is the financial report. We didn't just do one of those because we had the meeting on the first, and that's just too quick to turn around. So with that, this is Duane.
Okay. Good evening, council.
See if I could destroy one. Came up in a different order.
Oh, yeah. So we're on the GFs right now. Okay, to begin with, we see the bank balances for the city as of close of business today. You see $25,000 roughly in the general fund, another 4,200 street and road. Court restricted, police restricted, on down the run there. Those deposits are at First Lockhart National Bank, $92,889. The Texpool Investment Fund has 207,000 in our emergency fund. And then the Public Funds Investment Act account has accrued interest. You see a general fund overflow, hotel tax, utility deposits and such, so that account has 112,000 in it. If you go down a little further, you'll see the Long Term Capital Improvement Fund. That first line item now has $128,349 after the action council took earlier in the month to transfer $65,000. I basically moved it from that second line up there, that overflow line down into the Long Term Capital Improvement Fund, so it really had no bearing on the day-to-day operations. And you see the balance of the comptroller fines there, $355,000 roughly.
So is the reserve for the patrol car, is that still considered an asset? I mean, we haven't applied that yet?
It is. We have received financing for the police car, spoke with the vendor today. Understand they're going to start manufacturing the models in early January, so that is all in place. And that $12,000 is actually our first payment on a lease. And then it'll be roughly $500 or $600 a month, I believe, after that. Any other questions on those account balances? Okay, the next one would be the budget report for the general fund. We are two months into the year, so I did my little math earlier. That is about 17% of the year, so if you go down the far right column looking at percentages, you'll see some of the revenues are pretty strong. Franchise fees are coming in ahead of plan currently. Hotel, I mean, sales tax revenue continues to be strong. It was another $7,500 this month, so continues to come in at a good clip as our citizens continue to shop at home more. Total income, $76,279 through the first two months. You see that's about 14% of the budget. The top line, it's worth noting, we've already received $38,000 of our property tax revenue for the year. Or just over 11%. That'll be a big number when we stand here a month from now. Because most people pay those taxes to get IRS tax deduction before the end of December. Okay, on down into expenses, payroll, personnel expenses right at 17% on plan. You see reimbursements from the utility fund. That looks on plan and total operating expenses at 11%, so so that is good in that section. And then overhead reimbursement from the utility as well. Looks good.
I wanted to ask you on the election expense.
Go ahead.
Back up, boss here.
Uh huh, was that? Did I see it was 15?
The budget. There it is, line 6520, $15,000 budget. And I think we had some discussion last time that some of the money up in that first line, 6510, may belong down there. I don't know, we're not already doing notices for elections, though. We're not, so I guess.
We should have got a bill coming up, but with the changeover they've had over there, that's probably holding that up, but there will be, there'll be a bill that comes in for the November election sometime. And of course, we got the May election coming up, so.
What about the pension expense of 3632, and that's at 21% of the projected budget?
Yeah, that.
Only two, two months into the budget?
Yeah, that, that expense lags a month behind. And you all may remember, last month, the wage line was actually over budget because there were three payrolls in the month of October. And anyway, yeah, that's.
Thank you.
That's what's going on there. All right. Think there's anything else on that report to discuss. We would then have yeah, the vendor balance detail. These are vendors that we paid in the prior month. There we go. I guess no big surprises there. Okay, now we'll look at utility fund budget report. Open this separately. There we go.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why I don't 5060, under ordinary income and expense? Credit card usage fee? Is it, is it my understanding that, that those dollars that are paid by individuals who pay their pay their bill online, that just goes into the general? Or do we have that designated?
When those fees are collected, they do go to revenue in this fund.
The utility fund?
Yes, the utility fund.
We actually have two.
There's, there's an expense that's really.
The first line item and the expense is the other side of the equation. 349 in expense and 313 in fees. So.
We actually have two credit card machines. One that's for the general fund and one's for the utility fund. If they pay utility bills online, it goes in the utility fund. If they pay municipal court tickets online, it goes in the general fund.
Okay.
Well, you'll see that set, a revenue side and an expense side on both layers.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Continue on down through the expenses, I guess. Say our largest expenses, obviously, are solid waste expense. And then the wastewater repair and maintenance, and both of those line items appear to be in line. You see total expense at 17%, ordinary income where the fund is at break even. With some money collected for, for new taps as well, but I saw that expense up above as well. That's a recouping, an expense up on line 7050, I believe. Okay, any questions on the utility fund? Okay, and then we'll look at the vendors, I suppose. All right. Questions with those? Have the grant fund. Which is I think I saw it there. Community Development Fund. The funds going through this right now are the coronavirus relief grant. Those funds have been received, expended and accounted for. The amount will climb to approximately $20,000 in December. Part of what we received reimbursement for or applied for reimbursement for is this equipment, so that we can have these meetings remotely due to the virus.
The council benefited, this is all at CRF funding. It runs out on December 30th. 31st, one of those today. No more charges after that, that are allowed to be reimbursed by CRF fund. But we have accounted for the original amount that came in with expenses. New set of expenses which we signed off today was like $7,000 and change.
Right.
And they took those. State lady told us that everything was in right, so we should be getting another check from them for, it'll go into revenue in there shortly. Then there's some, we haven't moved all the expenses over from the general fund, so when we do that, all those expenses will come over here and some of the expense lines will go down in the general fund.
That's right. That's right.
And then there'll be, the only thing we got left between now and the end of the year is Ruben's time, and then January 1st, we've got to go back to once a week claim at the post every day.
Unless we get a new whatever out of Congress in the next week.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Any questions for?
Yes, I mean, I heard that Ruben is emptying the garbage cans in the park now. And so is that, that's paid for out of the park budget?
It is.
Okay, and so what, what's the frequency in the cost of that?
I believe it's once a week and the cost of $20.
Okay, once a week. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next thing is consent items. I don't believe we got any minutes out of that right field yet. And so there's an accountable table, two sheets of accounts payable that is in the packets. In the stuff that Dwight sent out today. That's Dwight, Duane.
I'm sorry, he's bringing it up.
The Tyler Technologies, what's that? Is that the software?
Yes, that's the, that's the software for the court. And that is actually paid by their designated money that comes in from the speeding tickets. So yes, that's a annual software.
So that's, that's once a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question. Did we approve accounts payable last week before last on December 1st? When we did approve the consent items?
It's by default, probably. Did we, I don't know that we presented it. He did, I don't think he did. Now, we didn't present it, so.
It was on the, we didn't speak it out, so I was a little just backtracking, double checking.
Yeah, so that's your answer. Is there any other question? All right, there we go. The discussion possible action, 6A. Get the item 6A, letter engagement with.
Don't we have to approve?
Yeah, Mayor, I make a motion that we I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I second.
Mike, you're on Zoom. Yay, you're nice.
Yay.
And Sam?
Yay.
And Son?
Yes.
Thank y'all. All right, on to 6A. The city attorney has been operating under a letter of engagement since we hired him back in 2017. The original letter of engagement was for a period of one year. During the 2018, the ordinance that defines city officers was rewritten to conform to state legal requirements, and as part of that rewrite, the city attorney's position was made an officer of the city, so the term then became until he is dismissed. So we were kind of out of, out of kilter with, with the letter of engagement. This new letter of engagement removes the expiration date, so our ordinance and agreements with the attorneys are not contradictory and updates the payment agreement. He has asked for a slight amount of increase and we the letter of engagement reflects that. And so what we need is a motion. It is, we included it in the package, the actual letter of engagement. It's also given to y'all on the second. So any questions about that? Kent's on the phone somewhere, I think.
I'm here.
I'm going to accept the agreement on the city attorney's letter of engagement as presented.
I second.
Mike?
Yay.
Sam?
Yay.
And who believe now? Lisa? Lisa, yes or no?
Hi.
Thank you. That's a yes.
I'm good. Yeah, yes.
Got it, got it. Thank y'all very much. All right. This is discussion possible action on 6B. 6B is the use of our Long Term Capital Improvement Fund. So when last we left our heroes, we were going, we agreed to move $65,000 of unused money over to the Long Term Capital Improvement Fund. Bring us up to the 140 something thousand that you saw earlier. The yes. Yes. And with 12,000. And with twelve thousand of that dedicated to the, uh, new police car. Uh, earmarked for that. That leaves a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and some odd cents available for a city improvement project. Uh, when we reviewed this in our strategic plan, back at the beginning of the year, we collected inputs, et cetera. The two slides that you see at the bottom of the page there were done by Mr. Anable, uh, based off the inputs you've got. If y'all recall, those, the size of the letters indicates the amount of the responses from the citizens. So if the bigger the word, the, the more people say that's their number one problem. And so roads was obviously back in February, the single biggest problem and that's what we, what they liked. The two questions, of course, are where, where would you like the city government focus? Future efforts, roads? And if you were in charge, what would you change about Martin Dale of the roads and to do that? We gotta go spend some money, I guess. The other thing is the next slide, or go over there to the DCS presentation. So back in late seventeen and early eighteen, the city got our engineering firm at the time, uh, DCS Engineering to go off and tell us about what they thought we ought to do about roads, knowing that this was coming. And they provided this presentation. And so basically, go ahead and split through that to the next page. It talked, during it, it talked about what ours looked like, what typical the problems are, which is short inch of that is, is water. Different kinds of solutions and let the council at the time, uh, go through and try to evaluate what we thought we ought to go pick for a road solution if we were going to go off and work on the road. So keep, keep going here. So that was some pictures of what the roads look like in various areas going down. This is a diagram of what a road is really made of. The real problem is substrates. If, if your base is bad, it's gonna fail. We think with, that's what we really got around here is bad bases they were put in eighty years ago, seventy, eighty years ago. A lot of places, uh, haven't really been redone totally since then. Go ahead to the next one. Their, their comments after looking was lack of drainage, weak subgrade, heavy traffic, lack of lateral support. You've got to probably solve that, Mr. Glaze, that truck for a while ago was in front of your thing. So then they waltzed us through what kind of roads there are. There's gravel roads. I don't think we want to replace our roads with gravel roads. Uh, there's chip seal roads that, that is the cheapest form of doing that. That, of course, is what are the, our roads in Martindale are for the most part, which is chip sealed. Go to the next one. You can put down two inches of asphalt. They, they last longer, they give you a smoother ride, they cost more. Uh, larger upfront cost is, was one of the issues. Go on to the next one. Uh, we requested they evaluate this, this particular mo- model of road, which is put a couple of concrete ribbons down the side. You see this in a lot of small towns and other areas. It helps stabilize the edge so you don't have the edge cracking issues uh, that we see all over town. And then, uh, the idea was to put the asphalt in between. So on to the next one. The milling overlay was reviewed, gave you some relief for a short, short period of time, but it doesn't address the subsurface issues. Uh, the next one. And then, of course, a six-inch concrete road is like a federal highway. We, we're probably not going to be doing that around here. So they gave us some, uh, examples of cost. That was engineering estimates based off of their experience. Go ahead, go to the next one. And their recommendations were to do a drainage study for roadside ditch system with coves. You know, basically, if we could, if we could go fix anything, the first thing to fix is to go try to come up with some kind of a drainage system that would, would assist, you know, keep us from getting back into the shape we are today. And their recommendation initially was to do it across the city. Well, of course, that, that consumed all the money for several years to come. We haven't done that. Then we needed to prioritize the roads for repair, recommend DCS select the road repair type based on budget. So it's, so basically we needed to tell them which kind of roads we needed to go do. Appropriate the budget and get on with doing, doing the activity. Go to the spreadsheet. I think that's the last slide, didn't it?
Uh, there's two more.
Go to the next two.
This was the recommended schedule that they had and questions.
And then, um, the spreadsheet in the attempt in twenty eighteen to go off and prioritize the roads so we could decide, A, how, how we wanted to go, what type of road to go build and prioritize them. We made a list of those. So on the left-hand side at column A, we labeled them. B, column B is the description of the roads, et cetera. Column D is the important one for the council. Uh, we, we selected at the time two main types of roads. One of them was the, it's called CSR. It's in blue up there. That was the concrete strip uh, asphalt road picture that we looked at. For areas that do not have adequate drainage and/or easement space, we said we would do those. We would place those, that kind of build that kind of road if we were going to rebuild them. The ASP ones are the just asphalt. So they're the ones that have sufficient easements. And we could go in and build drainage ditches, the appropriate drainage ditches, et cetera. And in areas where you might have a little strip of enough space to do drainings, but it, it's surrounded by areas that aren't, we said that we would do one of the other type based off of keeping the aesthetics for the city the same. So that's the list of roads. That's the priority done by the council that was done at the time. We can go redo that here if we want to. But the first question that before the council is, are we all still, I mean, this has been over three years. We want to make sure that this council is, is is still on board with prioritizing roads is the number one thing to go off and spend our capital and for long-term capital improvement money on. So go back to the slide. He's trying. And with that, I'm going to open the, the, the we're going to go around, but the council member gets you, each of you an opportunity to say yes, no. This is what we think we ought to do it all. And Sam, you can go first.
Um, I noticed on the list, on the priority list, Lockhart Street was maybe third or fourth down on the list, but it only said at the Y behind the gas station. Why was not the whole street of Lockhart Street considered in the priority list?
It, it, it is in the priority list. Uh, you want to go back to that? In two sections. You'll see.
I only saw the Y there at the very top.
Yeah. It's in there in two pieces. One of them, you, you see the SPC areas there? Those are specials. Uh, those are things that have needed more than just road replacement. Uh, the items like, uh, the S-curve are over there, the, the low water park area by the old schoolhouse, down by the glazes where that, that road always goes underwater. Uh, the others that are in there. And if you'll see, there's the other piece of Lockhart Street, I think, that you're looking for.
But that still only mentions the Y. It, it doesn't mention the continuum of Lockhart Street.
It's very up to the top.
Okay, the top.
It was number five on the hit parade.
From the intersection of Y in front of the Catholic Church. Okay, to Main Street. Okay. And that's what, fourth? One, two, three, fourth priority. So we can take Southeast River Road off the priority list now that it's, it's been completed?
Uh, Southeast River Road's been repaired. It has not been replaced. I, I you know. But the priority list has changed. There's no, nothing wrong with that, but I would not say that it has been finished. It has been chip sealed over the top of it. It's not, it's still not up to this. It's not where we're going. It's all much better than it was, but it's not where we wanted to go.
Okay. And the last, last comment, I would like to see Bacchus Street and Castillo Street off of nineteen seventy-nine uh, is, is, is a gravel road and is that on, on the list?
Bacchus was right there.
Bacchus and Castillo are both very bad streets there too. It's off of, off of Bacchus, going down to.
This list on the backside?
What's the family that has the, the land there that's owned it for a long time? It's the cus- Castillo?
Now, I, I understand with some of those roads, are they private roads? Some of them are private.
Okay, okay. So that's why we're on, only including Bacchus Lane then?
That's my, um, what I'm, what I'm thinking because a lot of the streets, they, um, are private roads. So that's why they're, they're not, they weren't considered, but.
How long the worker still is. The road that's at the end of Bacchus where you turn left, if you go down Bacchus?
It's the first road on the left. Once you go on to Bacchus Street, let's see.
If you, if you follow Bacchus all the way to the end and there's a road that goes to the left, that's called fistless. It's a sign up there.
Right there.
Is it there where the marker is?
Yes. Oh, that's private.
Castillo Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Uh, but that may, may be private. Let's, let's check on Castillo Street and see if that's private or or not. That's, that's all, all I have.
Don't be, it is. So we will make sure and we'll contact you or email you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sonya, you ready to hang now?
So I've been, um, on this endeavor since we went and prioritized and we've done a lot of work like going into that and it's still three years later. So I would like to just see us proceed with, um, doing it, um, as far as the study and everything. And, um, with the, you know, our constituents want our roads done.
Amen.
So that's what we need to do. We need to, we need to focus on our roads. We need to, you know, go off of our list. We do have new council members. Maybe their input would be like to prioritize some other roads. So I mean, I value their input, but we need to go ahead and just move on and, and do it.
Okay, Mike, you got anything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to go on that list. I'm going to go on that second page where you said excavation of current road base. Does that mean totally remove down to the road base? Totally remove? Is that correct? Am I assuming that?
Yes, I think.
I've, 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 I've talked to Ed Thuriel about this multiple times and it's in my, and we've discussed it. And if you go down, for example, to the Three Dudes Winery, where they, their road was very similar to what we have. And the county, Caldwell County, put the hot asphalt right over that existing road. So we need, I think we need to talk to the county because we did have an interlocal agreement with Southeast River Road. We need to bring in the county because, you know what, guys? We all pay county taxes, all of us. So why don't we bring the county in, at least when we start figuring the cost of this thing? And get the county involved and see what kind of interlocal agreement we can do. And maybe we can have a workshop and maybe go out and watch them do this technique. And also see what their, what their, um, their, uh, lifetime is. Because like I said before, I've discussed this before. You know, like for example, Skulls Road, they, they do it multiple times because the road base is not stable and it, and it fails. But if you look at our roads, the mo- like Lockhart, Northwest River Road, Main Street, it's the edge of the road. The center of the road is in pretty good shape. And I think it'd be a worthwhile discussion with the county commissioner and maybe their road crew and see if that's a viable option for us. Then we could spread that money out and do a lot more, a lot more, uh, down the road, you know, instead of doing all this other extra, extra items that we could possibly get, get a lot more done. I just, I just see a lot of cost here and, uh, which is good to have the curb and all that, but we're not, we don't have the money to do, do all the roads. So I think it'd be a good discussion with the county. I don't know if my fellow council people agree with that, but at least have, have a discussion. And we did an interlocal agreement with the county on Southeast River Road. So let's, let's have a discussion with the county.
All right. Thank you for your inputs. Lisa?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to, to reiterate one of the things that council member Viallo stated. Um, I, as she have been on this project for a very long time. And, and absolutely, um, two points to be made is that Lockhart Street is typically the first street that any potential newcomer to Martindale looking at property or coming to town for to eat our cafe or show, or shop at Good Things Grocery. Um, and I think it's critical that we definitely make certain that, and I know Lockhart's like, you know, on our list number five. But I just, I just definitely want to state the fact that that particular street is critical. I even had a resident, um, send me a message today. Um, unknowing that this item was on the agenda. Um, just that passing on Lockhart Street specifically between Highway eighty and, uh, and the post office, the potholes and such that are on either side of the road makes it sometimes if it's two trucks impassable at the same time on that road, which should be two lanes. So I'm just delivering some information from a resident. Um, and definitely on board with moving forward and seeing some action happen on this project. Thank you.
All right. Jan, you got anything you want to share?
Um, yes. Uh, I like the spreadsheet. I think we need to continue to work on what y'all have been working on. I know that there's three of y'all on, uh, that were on this the spreadsheet decision kind of thing. But I'd like for, uh, for us to go ahead and maybe redo that sheet and see what this council as a whole, it, what it kind of, um, you know, kind of, we can kind of vote again on which roads we can prioritize. And speaking of Lockhart Street, I don't know, I mean, what the cost is because there, there's going to be a lot of detours when we do the Lockhart Street. Because I guess the only way to get into town is either Quail Run or, uh, nineteen seventy-nine. So there's going to be a little bit of a cost in rerouting traffic. Let's see, what else? Are there going to be some roads that we may want to do, the chip seal? That might be a little bit less expensive. Maybe less traveled roads, maybe it'll last ten years or so. Maybe we can get several roads done, something to think about. For the smaller roads that are less traveled. Now, maybe with the money, we can do more roads instead of one big road. You know, where there's a lot of options to think about. And what type of road we're going to use? If we're going to redo it or just mill it and pave over it and, you know. Because we're not going to do redo all of the roads, or are we? There's a lot of questions to go through. This is going to be a topic, I guess, we're going to talk about every city council meeting.
Next thing we got to decide, if we're still going to spend the ru- our long-term capital improvement money on the roads. I got a definite yes from Sonya. I've got a definite yes from Sonya, I've got a definite yes from Lisa, I've got a kinda yes from Jan. I got a, he's not ready yet, from Mike.
Well, can I, can I add, can I add, can I add something to it? I'm, I'm for giving the money. Like I said, if, I mean, I do talk to Ed Thuriel, would it be?
Okay, so Mike's not a definite yes.
Yes, I'm a definite yes.
Can I speak, Jan? Jan, can I speak? Would it, would it be worthwhile to have Ed Thuriel come over with their road people? And we can have a discussion what they do in the county? I mean, I, I would like to have that discussion before we start putting it out to bid to see if we can do some kind of agreement with the county, that's all I'm asking for. I agree to spend the money, but I'd like to have that option considered.
Okay, we're gonna get to that in a minute.
Okay.
So you, you're now definite yes, and Sam, I couldn't tell.
Oh, yes.
Sam's a definite yes. Okay, so I need, I would like a motion that says we, we need to spend the approximately a hundred and twenty
Eight?
Eight thousand dollars on, on road repair.
Did somebody make a?
Sonya and I both.
Yeah, I need a second. Lisa, I'm trying to count it in a second, I think you, y'all both got on top of each others. And.
Yes.
And Sam?
Yes.
Yes. Mike?
Yeah, one more time, yes, I'm all for it, but let's bring the county in for a discussion at least.
And Jan?
Yes.
That's the first piece.
I have one bit of information, I, I definitely agree with Councilmember Bunker in, in regards to the other council members who were not on council when this project began. It is my thought, you certainly can be the one to make the recommendation that, that they go through this list, as did we. Quite frankly, we filled some potholes, but we haven't done any of this work that we began to evaluate three years ago. So nothing's changed in my opinion on my, on each of those items, just on your own, you know, in the next week or so. To, to, to just submit your, your priorities and, and, and add those, add those folks to our spreadsheet to update it.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna get there. All right, the next piece of this question is the recommendations that came out of DCS are listed there, one through six. You can see, Sam, we kind of, we're working our way through that. The recommended drain study for roadside ditch systems with culverts was not, has not had any action on it. Based on our budget not being sufficient to go do big sections, which is what they, they wanted us to go do. We decided we would evaluate drainage requirements as part of each project. So as we identify a road, we will then look at it and say, okay, what are we gonna do about the drainage as part of this? So we're gonna do it, we're just not gonna do it exactly like they, they said. The city prioritized the roads for repair, of course, we did that in twenty eighteen, try to understand how to do that. You've seen the priority sheet, what I've heard is, is that we wanna go back and re, redo that. So we will send that out, a new one to, to the council members and try to get your inputs back. It'd be good if we got them before the end of the year.
And you're only sending those to the new council members, right?
I'm gonna send everybody, everybody gets to redo it here, we just, we just redo the whole thing. Is that a problem?
I just think that, you know, as a council, we keep on reinventing the wheel whenever it's already been done. You know, my opinions have not changed on the priority of the roads that need to take place. We also had two council members before, previous council, that were in charge of the roads and doing this. So we keep on going back to where we were rather than progressing forward. I think that if the new council members want to go ahead and jump in and prioritize their list, I know my list hasn't changed, I've already done my work, and I think we just keep on going back to where we started.
So you're done?
I agree.
You, and Lisa, you, Lisa, you say the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so we will send it out to Jan and Sam and Mike. And you guys will have a few days to go provide your inputs. The, the way that worked was you give us the top five roads. If you go back to that spreadsheet here.
Would that, would that be a good time to add my, my additional comments about possibly getting the county involved?
Yeah, we can do, we can, we can do something like that. Before we get on to that subject, if you look, go out to the, make it a little smaller. So, so all the roads that are, that are city maintained roads are listed, I believe, pretty sure. If you, the, the way you do this, gang, is you give me your top five. Now, when you have six people all picking out of a longer, a list of thirty, twenty-seven or twenty-nine or whatever the number is, they don't all pick the same top five, so that's where all these sixes came from. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna scrub the spreadsheet and send you something where you just put one through five in the rows that you thought, that, that you're interested in, and send those back. It's not difficult. We will then go merge them with these other votes and then bubble the ones that get the lowest number, which is the top priority, number one priority, to the top. And then we will have a discussion again on that and make sure that everybody understands where it came from. And you can lobby and, and do the thing. So that's the way that's gonna work for you guys that haven't done it before.
Mayor, and with our long-term capital improvement, with the roads that are gonna be done there for Northwest River Road, okay, they're all the way down there, okay.
Okay, on item three of the, of this was to select the repair type that we wanna go use. Mike has suggested that we go throw a third one in there. He wants to go get Ed Thuriel, who is an engineer, to, and the county road crews to give us more information that, I guess you think DCS engineering or whatever it was is telling us the, the right scoop or wasn't considering cost issues or something. Is that it, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, and if you want, I'll, I'll, I can, I can, maybe I can give him a call, I'll get with you, and maybe we can all meet, if you wanna meet with him, and we can, well, you know, you need to be involved and we can all have a chit chat. So I'll, I'll get with him, I'll, I'll call him this week and see what his schedule's like. I don't know about Christmas time, but I will interface with him and see where his, his pulse is. But he did sound interested, he would, would, would consider it, so we'll just gotta see the cost and everything. But I'll get with you on that.
To me, to me, that's something that's a meeting that is done outside of a council meeting.
Yeah.
I think I mentioned in your mouth, trying to say something too.
What's that?
I think our engineering group from Cleveland is on, on the call, I'm not sure if he's trying to say something.
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor, if you don't mind.
You're there, there, yeah, yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, Thomas.
Yeah, I think the councilman is, is on to something. About a year ago, we did a, a street assessment for the city of Smithville. And they took our recommendations and they went to the county, County of Bastrop. And they have a longstanding interlocal agreement where the county would come into the city from time to time and maintain a list of streets that the city gave them. That agreement had preset prices for asphalt and chip seal. And all the city was required to do is sometime in the, in the early spring, beginning of the year, give them a list of streets that they wanted the county to do that year. And the county took care of them, and they charged based on the rates in their agreement. I believe that agreement has been in place for several years, and they've been very, both sides have been very happy with that. The city of Smithville takes advantage of the resources that the county has. And the county, provided they are given notice, you know, have enough resources to get that work done. And that's certainly something that might work for you.
Well, for the, for the council's information and yours too, Thomas, we actually have a, an interlocal agreement with the county with the streets listed, that's where that list came from. Our issue has been that, that the repair processes that they've used in the past have not held up. And we're not happy with, with how, we weren't happy at the time with how those, those went. We've come up with a better, a longer lasting solution. Now whether or not we could go say we wanna do quality control, you know, better quality control on, on the county's work crews, maybe so, but we, we can do that. I don't have a problem at all talking to, talking to Ed and going through that. But if we did that, we would, we certainly would need to come up with a a, a, a better solution than what they provided in the past. All right, but Thomas, can you share with us a little bit about this concept of just overlaying a, a road that's got a sub, a, a base that is, that is poor?
Well, I don't recommend you asphalt overlay a road with poor base material. It's, you know, asphalt overlay is very expensive, it's quite an investment. And you should have good base material before you overlay. So, you know, I don't, I don't recommend overlay on a road with bad, bad base materials.
Do you want to ask a question?
Sure.
Another follow-up question, this is Jared Allen, the city administrator. Question about using, if we're doing a chip seal over the top of what we have existing, and we're having a lot of edge erosion. To me, it seems that that chip seal is just gonna break apart pretty quickly, or continue to break apart. Can you speak to that? Am I, is that a wrong assumption, or?
No, not, not necessarily. The header curb or the ribbon curb on either side of the pavement serves to prevent what we call edge cracking. And those are longitudinal cracks that form, you know, parallel to the edge of the road, probably within, you know, two or three feet of the, the edge of the road. We all love ribbon curb, it, it's great for the street. The downside is it, it runs about twenty-five to about thirty dollars per foot. But one is, once it is in place, it does wonderful things for the road. Having said that, you also need to look at roadside drainage. If, if the, the water just sits on the road or just sits on the ditch and doesn't drain off, then your road is gonna deteriorate more quickly than others that have good drainage over time. So I saw one of the recommendations from DCS, you know, was to look at a roadside ditch system, which is a very good recommendation, and is, it's a good investment in your, in your roads. And, you know, to make that work, I would suggest, if at all possible, that we look at roads and start downstream and, and work ourselves upstream, so to speak. But that's not always possible, I understand those things. But anytime that you can improve drainage, you're making a very good investment in your road.
Hey, sir, you're an engineer, I would, I would like, if you could, maybe we could get together and I could take you some, down some roads in Caldwell County where I thought it would be a good technique we could use, if you have the time.
Love to, just let me know.
Or if it's okay with the council and the mayor, maybe you could be in on the discussion with the county and the road crew.
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Generally, the, the county road crews are, are really good at chip sealing. And I'm surprised that work they've done in the past hasn't lasted as long as you, you hoped. They're usually good at asphalt as well, just depends on the county and how much money they have to spend on, on their road. But they're, you know, if, if, if there's a cooperative environment and they have the resources and they're willing, it, it could be a, a really good mutual agreement.
All right, you have a question for Thomas? All right, let's move on to the, to the, to the other piece of this pie, which is the bid, bidding list. The spending anything over fifty thousand dollars requires us to, that's, next thing. There you go. A state law requires you go through a certain process. You got to go bid stuff out to, in a, in a formal manner, call for inputs, there are sealed bids. You don't open them up until you get to the, to, to, into the bid process. Either a committee or the council as a whole gets to open them up. We're required to take the lowest bid that meets all the qualifications that we've set forth in the bid. It gets to be kind of complicated. They, our engineering firm would help us go manage that process, they've done this before many times. But that's all has to be in there, as well as, as surveys and making sure we put the roads where they're supposed to be, et cetera. So when we're talking about a hundred and twenty-eight point three K of budget, it's gotta cover everything, engineering costs, survey costs, advertising to bid and construction costs, et cetera. So that limits the, the, the length of the road that we should be able to go off and go do with a hundred and twenty-eight K. I think, and this is just based off of what DCS said and what we've seen in other places, I think we got somewhere between six hundred and eight hundred linear feet of road that we can cover with this. If we go do concrete ribbon strip road, it's a little cheaper if we go just the asphalt road, but there'll be some drainage activity that these might push it the other direction. So we'll have to go, go see that. So where we're headed here now is, is we're gonna go, we're gonna take the action to go off and recall for priorities from the council. We're going to go meet with the engineer and, and the county and Mike and to see about if there's a third one we wanna go recommend, or he wants to go recommend, a third different type. And which point in time we'll have to assign those types to individual roads. And then, once we've got that, we will have, come back and make, need to make a motion to, from the council to specify a road or a set of roads to go off and get bids for. And we need to probably try to be doing all of this in turn, where if something gets done. That's, that's the end of this one. So we've got agreement, roads is where we wanna spend our money, and and that's the plan. Any, any comments or questions out of council on that? All right. Very good, that brings us to agenda item six seed, or has to do with HK Real Estate Development Waste Water Permit. The HK real estate is applied for a wastewater treatment permit for the property within San Marcos ETJ. Doesn't really have anything to do with us, other than if they get the permit and they set up a waste treatment facility, the discharge from that facility would eventually flow in the San Marcos River at a point just inside the, the Martindale city limits. And we think that this gives us standing to contest this import. The process that they had to go through, of course, was to apply for a permit, they did that in twenty nineteen. TCEQ reviews the permit, they hold a public hearing, that's TCEQ holds a public hearing for any interested parties. They did that in March of twenty twenty. Uh, we went, we, I went as representing the city. A number of other council members were there. The comments that, from that meeting were answered by the TCEQ's executive director formally on November twenty-fourth of this year, twenty twenty. And we have thirty days to contest executive day director's decision. Parties withstanding may contest executive decision. And they must be done. We've got to do that in writing by twelve twenty-four. We have thirty days to go do that in writing. So the city recommends that we contest the decision based on the new lower cost that should be required to connect a re- regional waste treatment facility, uh, which it would be the San Marcos plant, waste treatment plant. And that's due to a recent agreement that happened after the March meeting. And after all these comments went in. I don't know how much the TCEQ knows about that, but, but I'm, I'm recommending that we go uh, submit a contest, a, a, a letter that contests thi- this, uh, decision of the TCEQ executive director. What that means to the city is, is that means Kent has to go do it. He'll end up being a, a, you know, this is going to cost us some money. We don't know how much. Uh, it may not cost us anything, uh, but it could. Uh, the timing on this is they get it by the twenty-fourth and then they'll set up a hearing sometime next year. As you can see, it started in twenty nineteen. And we're now just days away from twenty twenty-one and they, they, they're still arguing about, about the permit. So they don't, things don't happen quickly at TCEQ. Uh, so.
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, uh, to approve contesting, uh, the permit application.
My second.
Mike?
Yes, in favor, yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
And Lisa? Lisa, yes or no?
She's muted.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Got us through section six. Now we're on to section seven with most of the crowd that's here. I'm sorry folks, that's the way it works. Okay, we're on to the, uh, agenda item about downtown park. So we're in now into the discussion only phase of, of this. This was always just to go have an opportunity for the council to talk to, talk this, these issues over. Uh, I think a lot of the inputs that we've seen have, have, thought that there was going to be a vote or something this tonight. This is again, just an opportunity for the council to have these discussions. And so with that, we are now going to back up to public comment time. Those of you who came in at this meeting are the ones at the end of the, of this, you will get your turn. We received a number of comments from people and I am about to go read them. I hope the new, um, telephone system works and everybody out there in Zoom land can, can hear this. And everybody's ready for this. All right. I got a letter here from Ms. Pat Wilkins. She said, although I'm no longer a citizen of the Martin Dale, I still have a very strong connection with Guardiola Park, going back to designation as a park in the early two thousands. Originally, it was a FEMA buyout property after a terrible flood that became city property after the owners were paid by FEMA as per agreement with the agency. Too small to be a regular park and with no access to the river, the property became a rest area slash pocket park named after the previous owners. It is equipped with benches, split rail fences, sundial and zero skate plantings and specimen trees. There are no utilities on site. Guardiola Park is located within the historic district and is subject to those particular constraints and also to FEMA constraints and floodplain regulations. Volunteers paid for the fences, benches, sundial and plants, trees, except for the already existing elm, mountain laurels, pecan and primrose jasmine. The work was done by volunteers. The two boulders were donated for park use only by a volunteer. The park is watered by volunteers using buckets and hoses from next door and across the street neighbors. The grass is mowed by the city and volunteers who also weed eat. Tree trimming is paid for by, or slash, or done by volunteers. This park is not a financial hardship for the city. I have enthusiastically devoted my time, effort, money to this park. Guardiola Park is a good thing. It is a wonderful green spot in the downtown area and in the past has been used for Easter egg hunts, fundraising events for any welfare causes. Its uses could be expanded by adding a small open air bandstand and picnic tables. As a parking lot, the property would have limited use because of road access into and throughout, through the lot. FEMA and floodplain regulations would limit the types of accept, acceptable service paving materials. Parking spot delineations would be problematic, especially with handicapped parking. Lighting would also be important, especially at night. City would also be responsible for maintenance. Finally, unlike a parking lot, Guardiola Park is an attractive enhancement to the residential properties around. Thank you, Ms. Pat. The next one that came in was from Jennifer Lucio. It says, I find myself writing you this email tonight to object the removal of Guardiola Park. Guardiola Park means so much to me. Many other family members and citizens of Martin Dale. After property was purchased by FEMA, they honored my grandparents by making the piece of land a park and naming it after the family's last name. You see, my grandfather, Pedro Guardiola, was a World War II veteran and after the war, my grandparents and their children became migrant workers. In nineteen fifty-seven, they moved back to Texas from Minnesota and planted their roots at five oh four Main Street, Martin Dale, Texas. There they raised five children on that, on that piece of land they called home. After the children became adults, they all married and purchased property on Main Street in the city of Martin Dale, as well as Fanning Street. I think she meant Fanning, Fanning Street. Um, Martin Dale is home, not just to me, but many generations of our family. I find it very disrespectful and distasteful for someone to even think about destroying such attractive piece of nature and turning it into a parking lot. Guardiola Park is a piece of nature that many people from the surrounding towns and neighborhoods go to enjoy. I don't live too far from Martin Dale, so I'm unable to pass by from time to time. I've seen people that are not even related enjoy the park. I've seen children running around playing tag while their parents sit on the bench and watch. I've seen young people who are in love, sitting on the benches, uh, just spending time together, enjoying the scenery. I've seen people walking their dogs on that piece of land admiring the plants. And like my daughters, I've seen others take photos of their graduation, their family pictures at that park because FEMA planted so many beautiful plants and trees in honor of my late grandmother, Estel Guardiola. When that land was hers, she had many plant shrubs to bring y'all around now. After my grandfather passed away, my grandmother continued living there for years, playing her, paying her taxes without any assistance, just living off her retirement while caring for my aunt with special needs. She would, she would have continued to live on that piece of land if it wasn't for the flood of ninety-eight that created much chaos and damage to her historic home. Unfortunately, my grandmother wasn't able to financially remodel her home to meet the city codes and standards. So she had no choice but to sell the piece of land that was her home for many years. I lived in Martin Dale all my life until the age of eighteen. Martin Dale has always been a peaceful, family-oriented community. It would be a disgrace to make our small, humble city into a place where people from out of state coming in and take over by changing our small town into an image that is not what the citizens of Martin Dale have worked so hard to keep. The main street of Martin Dale has always had a historic and natural look. So why change it now? I humbly ask you to please consider my email as a vote to object tearing down the Guardiola Park to make it into a park. The next one is from Kristen Lucio. Dear Mr. DeMene, Ms. Goldman, I'm writing you this email tonight to object for removal of Guardiola Park. Guardiola Park means so much to me and many other family members and the citizens of Martin Dale. After the property was purchased by FEMA, they honored my great-grandfather, who was a World War II veteran, by making the piece of land a, a park and naming it after the family's last name. Guardiola Park is a beautiful piece of nature that many people from the surrounding towns and neighborhoods go to enjoy. I've seen people that are not family enjoy the park and admire the surrounding trees and plants at the park because FEMA planted so many beautiful greenery in honor of my late, great-grandmother Estel Guardiola. I humbly ask you to please consider my email as a vote to objecting to tearing down the Guardiola Park and making it into a parking lot as this is the last piece of my great-grandparents we have here with us. The next is from Patrick Guardiola. whom it may concern. My name is Patrick K. Guardiola. I'm a third generation, great nephew to the original property owners of said property. Uncle Pete Guardiola Senior. My grandfather's brother and my mother's uncle. Guardiola's Park is a very significant history and tradition to the Guardiola family that stretches not just across the state, but across the country. This park is a legacy of my great uncle Pete and to our family. One in which we often and regularly visit when Uncle Pete and his home had his home there. Is a place that my mother cherished along with my mother's brothers and sisters. Where they spent and have many childhood memories. One in which I would love to continue and visit and eventually gather again one day with other Guardiola relatives, relatives post pandemic. And as grandfather myself now, with my own grandchildren, to replace this property with a parking lot is a travesty, not just to myself, but everything my uncle Pete worked for. Everything my family stands for. Everything that is priceless, irreplaceable and invaluable. It is Texas history. It is the history of my great uncle. A veteran who is a true patriot to this country. Guardiola Park is an honor to Uncle Pete. My family is presenting to you, Mayor Martin Dale, Texas, why Guardiola Park must stay because not only does Guardiola Park represent the history of the service of Uncle Pete and the history of the branch of his family, who are the true heirs of my family, one of many branches of this huge tree. But Guardiola Park represents the contribution of Mexican-American heritage to the state and country. And in a country and state where whites honor the Confederate traders of the United Na- States, where they can erect huge monuments almost undisturbed, we as natives to this land should be allowed in honor of a monument of our own, which is Guardiola Park, as it should be with great guard. All right. Uh, another one from Letitia Freeman. I am writing this letter to express my strong opposition to the development of a parking lot in place of Guardiola Park. I object to destruction of the park because it represents the legacy of my grandparents. I also own the property next door to the park and I am concerned with the amount of foot traffic that will take place. No noise at unpredictable hours and bright lights. Please reconsider the proposed. Number six from Deb Inglesberg. Good morning. I'd like to address the park ordinance, chapter ninety-three, source American legal publishing code library, every bullet point below listed reasoning to object any alteration to a dedicated FEMA restricted land. In order to stay in compliance, the city must stay compliant with government ordinances. I ask that people could read the below items and humbly ask the elected officials of Martin Dale, Texas to abort this idea and move on to another topic. Thank you for working to abort any alterations to Guardiola Park and support the maintaining town charm, any code of effect FEMA violations and community peace. And then she provided our ordinance one fifty-three, which is under land use is the flood damage prevention. And I'm not going to read that. More than three minutes. We all have copies of that if you want. We have one for Richard Salmon. Mayor, I want to express my disapproval of attempts by the city of Martin Dale and you in particular to turn Guardiola Park into a parking lot for some developer. I would like this email to e- to enter into the record. The park is named after Pedro and Estel Guardiola, who are my uncle and aunt. The, the cit- I think the city has no business doing this for developers. They can do it themselves by buying an existing lot nearby and making their own parking lot. This action is against the wishes of the family and the citizens of the city and may well be, be illegal. Whole idea is not to even cause, is not even cost effective and should be shut down. Families related to A, Pedro and Estel include the Guardiolas, the Sommons, the Garcias, the Herretos, the, the Yenes and several others, I think is what he meant. I do not think you want to be known as the mayor. Hold, hold destroy the park to make a parking lot for a developer. Thanks. This one is from Melba Garcia. Says, dear Mr. Mayor, it was kind of my attention that you're pushing to turn Guardiola Park into a parking lot. My grandparents, Pedro Guardiola Senior and my grandmother, Estel Guardiola, own the property where the park is at now. My grandparents bought the two-story house in the nineteen sixties. My grandparents raised five children in that house. My grandfather Pedro worked at the gas station next door for many years until he retired. They also owned the property behind them, which is part of the river. The property now is owned by my cousin, Armando Jimenez. In the nineteen nineties, Martin Dale experienced several floods. FEMA bought out my grandmother and she moved close to her daughter. My grandparents and their children were a big part of the Martin Dale community. They were involved at St. Mary's Church and my grandfather was well-known because at one time his gas station was the only one in town. My grandfather Pedro was a veteran of World War II. He laid his roots in Martin Dale after the war. The park is all we have left to preserve the legacy of our grandparents. Our family objects to your proposal to turn this park into a parking lot. I'm also not sure why FEMA would approve this since they wouldn't let my grandmother rebuild after the last flood. I spoke with my aunt and she told me that there's a big cesspool underneath the property. I'm not sure if you were aware of that. Please reconsider your parking lot. I just had a medical procedure and I can't drive to attend the meeting tonight. San Marcos has already been ruined by parking lots and parking complexes while outsiders destroyed our history. I may need to get a lawyer to find out if this property is historical landmark. When my grandparents bought their house, it had already been there for almost a hundred years. This was the story told to me by my late mother. Please don't destroy a small town just to make a buck. I will be contact, contacting FEMA to find out if this is possible, even possible for you to do. Please read my statement at tomorrow. The next one, Dan Guardiola. Hi, this is Carl Guardiola. I attend church with you and your husband. I think they're talking about Sylvia here. Uh, at Immaculate Heart of Mary, I was the first per grandson of Pete and Estel Guardiola. They owned the property before FEMA bought it. This happened in nineteen ninety-eight. All of my childhood was spent there, as well as my cousins and many other extended family members. The park serves as a memorial to my grandfather who served in World War II. It also serves as a reminder of how much our grandparents loved us in this community. I can go on about all these reasons for the park to stay, but I'm going to leave it up to God's will. I pray that decisions go, will go in favor of the Guardiola family. Thank you and God bless. And then for Mr. Michael Guardiola. Thank you, Mayor, council members and citizens of Martin Dills for allowing me to voice my opinion. My business is regarding Guardiola Park and the proposed alteration of the park into a parking lot. I am a Martin Dale native and the Guardiola Park was where my grandparents, Pedro and Estel Guardiola, had a house and lived for over sixty years. This plot of land, Guardiola Park, brings a flood of memories every time I visit. Our family even planted a tree in our grandparents' honors with a celebration that included the Guardiola Santella, Dante, Yana, uh, Jimenez, Serrano and Solomon families. Without going into a long story of how this place, piece of land is a reminder of Martin Dale's good times, which complements direct, directly the preservation of downtown. For the record, I respectfully oppose the building of a parking lot in place of Guardiola Park. Thank you for listening. And then we have one from Jessica Guardiola. I wrote an essay in one of my college classes about my grandparents and the big white house they lived in. When the house was knocked down, that day was devastating. Later, they turned the land that the house sat on into what was now today Guardiola Park. I remember like it was yesterday. And my whole family came together for the ribbon cutting of Guardiola Park. My grandfather was a war veteran and, and him and my grandmother were a big part of the history of Martin Dale. When I drive by Guardiola Park, I take pride in knowing where my roots started. I want to drive by one day with my children and tell them all about the start of the Guardiola family. I don't want to drive by and see a parking lot full of cars that have no interest in the history of my grandparents. Please make a conscious decision not to make Guardiola Park into a parking lot. Keep the city of Martin Dale what it is and preserve the history and beauty of its development. And then we have one from Elizabeth Garcia. Hello, I'm writing this email in regards to Guardiola Park being turned into a parking lot. I am a, I'm a, I am against this proposal. Regardless of parking, there are other locations in Martin Dale that can be used for parking. If a business wants parking space, they should purchase and demolish an established park. They should not should not demolish an established park. My grandparents were Pedro and Estel Guardiola. They owned the property that's now Guardiola Park. This property has been in our family for decades. My grandparents were part of the community until the flood of ninety-eight. FEMA bought the house. I grew up at five oh eight Main Street, the property next door. The property is still in my family. It's my sister and husband now own it. We have many memories as children and adults of Guardiola Park. Somewhere we can take our children to see where their great-grandparents lived and it's part of our family history. I ask that you could take this into consideration, vote against turning Guardiola Park into a parking lot. The next one that came in was from Ms. Santiago. And did you want to go read this yourself or you won't be?
I'm reading it. It's everything, everybody wrote it. It's same, same, but then I have a little bit and then that would be it.
Have it.
Everybody knows it. We're not part of the veteran. Everybody knows the history of it. And as a Hispanic, World War II veteran, raised his family on that property for many years. Changing it, changing it into a parking lot would be a slap in the face to the veteran that fought for our country. Martin Dale is a growing community and we need to preserve the early history of our town for the residents of this community. The park should be made a historical marker for a World War II veteran. History needs to be told, not buried. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have one more from Angela Jimenez. Uh, is it, are you Angel?
Yes.
Uh, yes ma'am, have at it.
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I came to you not just as a family member of the Guardiola family, but a Martin Dale resident. Our family was so sad to hear that we were, our family was so sad to hear that after we were given the park and it was dedicated to our grandpa and our grandparents' name, the city would even consider taking it back and turning it into a parking lot. I can't help but feel as if it's not just wrong, but disrespectful. We happen to live right We happen to live right next door and already deal with people that park and travel through our yard and throw trash and leave beer cans. And people that are trying to get to the river by going through our property. Turning the park into our parking lot would not only dishonor our family's legacy, it takes away precious green space. In my opinion, the parks should be built up by adding picnic tables and giving families more places to enjoy themselves. And truth be told, it would only serve as a temporary solution as the city continues to grow. For all of these reasons, I do not agree with turning the park into a parking lot. Again, thanks so much for allowing me to speak and have my voice heard.
Thank you, Miss Man. And that brings us to the last one, which is Mr. Bill Blais.
I'm, I'm Bill Blais. We've lived at four oh three Northwest River Road since nineteen ninety-one and with my wife Catherine. And I don't have a lot to add to that because obviously it's very well spoken and I am a veteran and I honor that. I believe that parking lots shouldn't be carved from our parks. They should be accommodated by the owners of the properties that are being rented out. And so two other real quick things. I was here last city council meeting and, and, and probably I was blindsided because I don't keep myself informed enough. But a vote was made to buy this police vehicle and, and I, I have strong objections to that happening. You know, I'm president of the, the, the volunteer fire department here and we have a, a great fire department. We have, we are in the process of securing our third emergency vehicle. Since I've been there a year and a half. And our total cost for those three vehicles will be less than we're going to pay for a, a police car. And, and it just to me, that was completely out of line. And now another thing coming up soon, so we're not blindsided, is that apparently the contract for our. Police chief comes up in a couple of months. And we're going to probably come to a meeting and no one will know about it and they'll vote on it and make another three-year contract. And I take strong objection to anything more than a year, if a contract at all. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, thank you all for your inputs on this activity. Now, let's go back to what seven A really was all about. We have an issue with traffic downtown. They are, it's come from more activity downtown, downtown from new businesses and there's more coming. We currently have eighteen parallel parking spaces and. That are, that are available for people to park in. On the street. When we see the Friday night, Saturday night activities that are going on, when we see special events that go on. And knowledge of it, that more people are coming. The cars currently, as Ms. Jimenez pointed out, are parking in her front yard and other, other yards around here. This is, this, this whole act, agenda item was to give the council views on where to go. Try to solve this, even if we want to solve this. Our problem is our, is not trying to help. The businesses down here. Our problem is trying to keep the people out of the front yards of the people that live along Main Street. So that's, that's why we were looking to go off and try to come up with places that they could park so they weren't parking in people's front yards, et cetera. So some of the options, we go to the next slide. That we looked at, we talked about this a year ago, or more than a year ago, probably. About turning the parking along Main Street into diagonally in head-in parking or. Ninety-degree head-in parking. And we thought we could pick up some additional spaces with that. It turns out that that's not going to work according to our engineering guy. Thomas, you're still here, I'm going to pitch the ball to you in a minute. But basically he gave, he, he went off and took some measurements here. Laid the street out, tried to see if he, how, how quick he could get in there, did some more research with, with what other cities do, et cetera. And this stuff that's on the slide here is, is the output out of that. Uh, so with that, Thomas, why don't you tell us about head-in parking? Your field knowledge.
I'll be happy to. Yeah, we, we took a look at the downtown area and made some measurements between. The sidewalks and the front of the businesses between the streets. And there's not an awful lot of room, depending on where you measure, somewhere between forty-eight, forty-nine and, and fifty feet. Uh, one of the things that I've run across when I've worked with cities in their downtown areas. Uh, the, the key word is comfort. It's important to establish a very comfortable atmosphere when people come downtown and park and, and walk around. And when you start putting in angled parking. You, you really narrow the travel lanes between, or in the, in the street between the parking spaces on both sides of the street. You narrow it down to about twenty-four feet. And in, in your case. As you approach downtown, you'll, you'll actually have to. Make a slight curve to get into those travel lanes and then curve back out. It's not an awful lot of room and people that are trying to back out of those spaces. As, as you know, you're old drivers, you know, it's hard to see behind you. It's hard to see pedestrians and it's hard to see people on bicycles. You have a pretty significant blind spot when you're trying to, to back out. So there's a safety issue. And, you know, again, we're, we're trying to create a, a comfortable atmosphere downtown. We want people to feel comfortable about pulling in and pulling out of spaces. Where, you know, they have good vision, it's easy to get to where they want to go. And it's, and it's a good experience. You, you try to put in angle parking. Uh, you're, you're, you're trying to cram a lot of parking spaces into a relatively small space. And I think you, you lose a lot of that comfortable feel. Uh, if you looked at our plan, you'll notice that we added some sidewalks. We added some ramps, we added a crosswalk. Again, this is all to make it easy to get around. Uh, safe to get around, again, trying to make your downtown area comfortable. You know, as it develops over time. Is there any questions that I can answer on what we are proposing?
I have a question, this is Jan.
Sure.
Um, one thing I was kind of concerned about because I knew angle in parking on both sides, there wouldn't be enough room for traffic flow.
No ma'am.
What about just angle in parking on one side and parallel parking on the other? Is that, I kind of feel like it's not, it wouldn't be good enough, but what, what were your?
Yes, we did look at that and again, the two-way traffic. Uh, that goes down Main Street between the parallel parking and the angle parking is awfully narrow. And again, we don't think it, it creates a safe environment. We don't think it creates a comfortable environment. And I realize that, uh, every downtown area has them. Uh, you know, we, we looked at Lockhart, San Marcos, uh, you know, different cities, you know, in the area of, of Martinville and they all have it. Uh, but they all don't have any other options either. Uh, and I felt like with Martinville, uh, you had some options, maybe not as many as we thought. But there are some options there. And again, we're trying to create as comfortable of a, of an atmosphere that we can for people who are parking and walking around.
One of the things Jan, that he pointed out when he was looking at this, that, that I didn't ever take into account is this. On the, the prior page where it says A three, it's the main street has high curbs on both sides of the street and no vehicle hangover. But typically when you have these big, big lawn pickup trucks pull up to a parking curb. All the way to the tire with the front end of the car hanging over it. Because of these high curbs we have, that's really not an option and you lose about a foot and a half to, to stick out. And, uh, uh, it's a pretty gray area. It's not, it's not, I think based off of the measurements that, that Thomas threw. I kept poking at him saying, there's got to be a way we can do these one side of these. But when he showed me these, these comments that come out of the, the Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, it says. This, this is not a question, question of can you, because we might actually be able to go do that. It's a question of should you? And, and when you get to that level, it's all of a sudden, nah, this is not a good idea to do this for us.
The mayor's. Yeah, the, the mayor's correct, he pushed me really hard. Um, and to reiterate on the, on the steps. If you, if you do angled parking, people will get out of their cars and they'll, they'll walk towards the businesses and. Uh, if you're familiar with downtown, you have steps, but they're not continuous, they're in particular places. And, and many of those are not going to line up, you know, with a parking space. So they got to go back out into the street and go around. Because as you park and angle park in, your car will become, come real close to that high curve. So, uh, one of the things you probably should think, should think about is, is. Add some steps in there so that you have continuous steps all the way down on both sides of the street. Uh, that way, regardless of where you park, uh, there will be a way to step up onto the main sidewalk.
All right, any other questions about parallel parking?
I, I have one, Sam Clinton. So on the map that we're seeing, I see parallel parking spaces designated between the silos and Gonzalez Street. But there's nothing from Gonzalez Street on Main Street going towards the right. Why don't, why don't you have any designated? Isn't there some space for a few more spaces there, parallel?
Talking about this area here.
Uh, no, further along, all along Main Street.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe that the, the pavement width is in transition. Uh, and you, you lose the width that, that you need for parallel parking spaces. We need about nine feet of width for each parallel space. Uh, and, and parallel parking in there would encroach into the, the traffic lanes. And so that's about the extent of the parking that we can do. You could always go in there and, and add some, add some pavement, of course, that, that would take some, some expense. Uh, but we're also, uh, uh, parking in front of a residence. Just to the right of Gonzalez Street, that's a home, is it not?
It is.
Yeah.
Uh, well, it's, it, on the city hall side of the street, it's a business. On the riverside of the street, it's a home.
Yeah, so we, we tried to avoid putting, uh, parallel parking spaces in front of homes.
That's the real problem.
Well, I don't, is that a problem?
Uh, people complain about, I don't know, that's why.
But they can legally park in front of the, you know, legally park. Parallel park, just like in the downtown area. I mean, isn't really all the way up Lockhart, I mean, not Lockhart, Main Street. I would think anybody could park anywhere.
Even though it's not designated, I'm assuming, and I agree with, with Jan, that it is by default. That the ability to park there is such. Is that correct?
Certainly what's happening now, and if we take no action, that'll continue to happen, of course. If that's not a problem, people, when they, when they call City Hall and start to continue to complain about it. I'll say, well, the council said it's, it's fine for you to do that.
Well, I have, I have a quick question. One, it might take a quick little count, but I'm curious how many letters were received in opposition for Guardiola Park. Being transitioned to, but as it currently is. So while that number is counted, of those letters that we received, the other question for, for Thomas is. How many parking spaces, just as a rough estimate, looking at our drawing here, could we potentially gain? By adding parallel parking down Main Street in front of homes?
There's roughly thirteen comments, we, we believe that we received regarding, regarding fifteen, regarding Guardiola Park.
I'll, I'll speak with Thomas to, to say that it's unfair to ask him to guess. We, he could go, he could go measure it or, you know, just off the bat. We can get to that answer if you want, if it helps you.
No, I wanted to.
How far, before we get off that, how far down do we want to go?
In my, in my personal opinion, for the fact. I'm sorry.
From Main Street to? Yeah.
I say from Main Street to Lockhart, since the old school is, is a venue, if you will. And the notion of people either staying at the old school, at the Martinville School and or attending an event there. And then potentially walking downtown, um, I think it's sensible.
And how far the other direction, y'all went in nineteen seventy-nine?
I say yes.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Yeah, if, 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 if the road, if the road gives opportunity, I say yes as well.
Okay.
I can look at this, please.
Uh, Mayor, can I have a comment?
Yeah.
Uh, I heard from, uh, I think it was Richard Salmon said that. It might be possible and was something we need to look into that. Uh, the Three Rivers, part of the Three Rivers Parking Lot is, uh. You is, um, belongs to the city and that can be used as a public parking also. So I think we need to look into that and see if that's true.
Where are you talking about, Jan?
The Three Rivers Parking Lot, the old Baptist Church?
I see.
That's a huge parking lot there. You know, we could probably use one of the old police vehicles and do a parking ride if we needed to. Just a thought.
Okay, we got that. Anything else on parallel parking?
I was, I'm still waiting to speak.
Okay, go on.
So I wanted to say that, like, we've come a long ways from, like, our last few meetings, whenever we, Mary Paul had volunteered. To do the striping in the road to now that we're, you know, kind of like doing this. Um, I think like if we're able to parallel park, be respectful of the homeowners and their situation. Um, I know that homeowners' rights, you could always put a sign that says no parking in front of your house, even though the cars are in the street. You could always do that as a homeowner. But I think whatever we could do, like here downtown, within our limits, we should try to keep it here rather than all the way down the streets.
I, I have a question or, or a concern. Uh, you did mention, sir, that the width of the street on Main Street is fifty feet. But as Main Street proceeds down towards the water treatment plant, the road and the easement is a little wider. Uh, could be almost seventy feet because I've noticed that some residents do, uh, angle park or pull straight in. As opposed to parallel parking. Is there any way to look at doing some angle parking, uh, say from the silo? uh, say from the silos going down towards the water treatment plant? I know that would mean more cars in front of the yards, but isn't the easement wider in that part of Main Street?
No, as, as far as I know, and I've looked at the, the mapping on the Caldwell County Appraisal District, the right of way is either fifty or sixty feet wide and it, and it remains that width uh, both either side of, of downtown. Now the, I will, I think the pavement width varies within the right of way. But I think once you get um, past Gonzales Street to the south, it narrows. Uh, and I think it does the same as you go north uh, towards uh, Northwest River Street.
It did, do you have a question or?
No, we're, 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 we're not going to do it. The uh, Mike, you got anything? You hadn't spoke up on this, on parallel parking?
No, that's, everybody's asked, Mike. I know, no comment.
Okay.
I have one more, I have one more comment I'd like to make. May I?
Sure.
Uh, there, um, there is an ordinance that I think needs to be repeated for clarification. Uh, there is, uh, we have off-street parking requirement for businesses, but there is an exception for the four hundred block of Main Street that uh, that they do not have to comply with any uh, off-street requirements for their businesses.
Do, do you have the uh, the chapter and, and verse of that ordinance?
Yes, it's uh, one fifty-five point one, one two five, uh, letter D. And if you go on to, if you go on to our website and look at our ordinances, go look up off-street parking and, and it will uh, explain it. So I think that uh, there was some confusion about why is the city uh, helping these businesses, you know, where they don't help any other businesses? It's not necessarily that we're helping the businesses, but we do want to encourage people to come downtown. So let's make a comfortable place for them to find a place to park.
And not burden the other citizens with, with the problems associated. Okay, with that, uh, we of course had thought, well, if we can't do parallel parking, what else can we do? So we came up with a couple of other options that, that add various activities. Option uh, B, of course, is the one of the, of the hour here, where we said, well, what if we use city land that's in Guardiola? Go back to the map there. Which you can see down here in the, put your cursor over that here, right there. That one has enough room for the, for uh, twenty-one spaces, which more than doubles downtown parking convenience. But, and of course there we were leaving, we made an attempt, as you can see those cutouts, to, to leave the big trees that are down there, et cetera. Uh, so that gives you some, some space. This property, option C, was there, there's a lock that Gonzales Street actually cuts through. That Jared's pointing to with his cursor right now. That belongs to GTE, or actually, I guess it's the equivalent of frontier people across the way. They're all the same folks. That if that was procured by somebody, could be the downtown businesses, if they wanted to, that could be turned into it, but that presupposes that we straightened out Gonzales Street. Cause it runs through the middle of it right now. What, what you see on the map with the dark lines, Jared put it over there to Gonzales Street. But yeah, that, that's what's on the CAD and is supposedly reflected by Deeds and things. We would have to go survey those uh, Deeds to make sure, but if we, if something was going to be done with option C, we would have to go, uh, we're gonna have to go straighten out Gonzales Street. So that kind of gets back to some of the earlier discussions of which streets would be good. It'd be good to finally go fix that eventually with the money that we got currently, just to go straighten all that out, even if we never did procure that. So what's your thoughts about uh, let's talk about option C first. Anybody into buying land and turning it into a parking lot? Sonya, how about you?
I mean, do we have funds for that?
No, we don't have funds for any of this.
So then that's, that's, that's a.
This is more to thinking about what we gotta do for the future.
So just, okay, so just like for me, the funding is, I mean, it's a nice idea, but whenever we're ready to get to some other ideas, then I'll speak then, but like, if there's no money for it, that's a no.
Uh, I went to the appraisal district and I got the uh, value of that piece of property. Uh, it's a half acre and it's currently appraised under twenty and twenty-twenty-one values at eleven thousand two hundred and ten dollars. So to, I mean, maybe that's a low uh, appraisal, but I, I think that is very in the lines of being very cost-effective because we will gain eight spaces and one van accessible handicap space in that section of land there beside Gonzales Street, which is already a hard surface with no trees and no vegetation. So it would be very easy and not very uh, cost-effective to resurface that and stripe it. The idea of, of Guardiola Park, I see nothing in that parking lot about uh, drainage, about curbs, about lights. Uh, and you, Sonya, do feel strongly about the dark sky, so uh, it definitely would not be a dark sky there at Guard, Guardiola Park with those lights. So I'm in favor of proceeding with option C and getting, giving us at this time, because we're in no hurry while the two-story building is being restored and the intermittent higher levels of parking are only on Friday and Saturday nights. It's not a continuous thing that I promote option C at this time.
Okay, Sam, with that, with the amount that you included, that doesn't include the, what we would have to do for the roads to redo it right there? And you said eleven thousand dollars with eight parking spaces? That's, that's like only with the land value, uh, that's a thousand dollars per parking space. Not including with the amount that you have to, to incur, that you're gonna incur for having to do the road?
It wouldn't be that difficult to straighten uh, Gonzalez Road. It's, it's, you would have to get a bulldozer or a scraper in there and just straighten it out and get, get that dirt out of the way. Um, the cost of, of doing Guardiola Park is gonna be a lot more. You have to uh, bring the level of the soil down, to pave a surface of that size. That is gonna really cost a lot. I have seen no estimates on the cost of paving twenty-one parking spaces.
We, we're not to the point where we need to dollarize anything. This is all just conceptual stuff, folks.
Well, I'm still in favor of C at this time instead of.
Could I, could I add something?
Yes, you can.
To, to agree with Sam, I think uh, maybe just acquire the property and, you know, you know, hopefully it's, maybe you can get it for less than that, who knows, but just don't do any paving or striping, just acquire the property and then use it as, I guess you'd call it primitive parking, whatever. It would all, it all, it'd already be available to park cars on there and yes, do that at, at a later date. Just basically acquire the property.
All right, and Jan, how about you on option C?
Has anybody contacted uh, GTE Southwest, the business?
No, not yet. We were waiting to see what the, we take the pulse of the council before we go do all the legwork associated with running the, these things down. This is all just conceptual.
Uh, since.
And the real question here is, is it, it, do you, do you as a council member feel like you want to, we, the city should try to go increase parking? Now again, some people will say, well, you're increasing parking so that the businesses downtown can thrive. And that's not the way I look at it. I'm trying to increase parking so that the citizens who live along Main Street don't have to put up with the, 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 the business activity that's going along there. Now that's the real question here. I guess it didn't phrase it here as well. But that, C, C would do that a little bit. Doesn't do it as much as, as, as option B, but it, it does it more than, than nothing, so.
Uh, well, uh, I'm okay with option C, uh, as long as uh, maybe we can uh, fit it into our budget next time we do.
We'll talk about that in just a second. And Lisa, how about you with option C?
Um, thank you. Um, I will, I will say this. First of all, I am definitely opposed to doing anything in regards to parking within the uh, confines of Guardiola Park. So let that be known. The other part uh, in connection with what you just said, Mayor, is um, when businesses downtown thrive, we have additional sales tax to help fund road improvements. So that, that is connected and that is big picture in my mind. I certainly understand and agree that um, improving our roads for our residents is a critical factor. But if we do not have any type of um, commerce, then it doesn't, it doesn't even matter. We would not have the funds to help fund any kind of improvements. That then segues to a question that maybe Jared could find out, and this is certainly creative and a little bit outside of the box. But we do have a hotel motel tax that is earmarked and designated specifically for tourism. Could it ever be considered that parking for people outside of town to come to businesses and or events inside of town be considered funded by tourism? Just a question.
Based on what I've seen before, that's highly unlikely. Um, one of the, if we're looking for ways of funding things, there, there are uh, block grants out there for downtown revitalization type of work, specifically for small rural towns. Um, that include, you know, sod walks and, and some of those things. We could try to go for one of those grants um, for those improvements. It would probably, we'd probably be in a better position if we already owned that land prior to going for one of those grants, though.
I don't know. We'll have to.
We can look, we can look.
We gotta go ask that question. But Lisa, I still didn't get an answer on, what about option C? Are you, you think the city ought to go, go for uh, try to improve parking downtown or not?
Yes, yes, sir, I do.
Or you think C's, C's a viable option? All right.
Yes, sir.
Back at B, this is the, the question on, should we do something on Guardiola? I got Lisa down as a definite no. I got Sam down as a definite no. Sonya, what have you got?
No.
That's a definite no. And Jan?
I'm with Carol King. I don't want to uh, pave paradise.
Okay, and Mike?
No, I agree.
All right. All right, so if we go after something, it would be the closest, and anybody, this idea of more parallels is something we'll, we'll, we'll look at. The uh, I don't know of any other property that.
Can I just discuss like the elephant in the room, if I may? Like that area that's right there where the bands are, and this was brought up to me by a citizen. Right there, the green space, if you could put the cursor over there, right in through there, parking boom, 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 inside.
Parking.
Boom, huh?
It all used to be parking there.
Yeah, so parking on that other side right there, um, all on the inside for the restaurant, whenever it does come. Um, I know it's taking away green space that, I mean, it's used. But like if it's a private property, just like the other property was private property.
The difference is that that property that we're talking about option C in belongs to a company that's currently in.
Bankruptcy.
Bankruptcy and probably would be willing to sell. The property in the green space, we know who owns that one, and I've already talked to him. All right, so I didn't put that on there just because it was a, it, you know, it's a non-starter.
Well, he took away a road that was in there and being to park on the road.
Mr. Romar, you go ahead.
And see, so that's what I was just, that's what I was asking about. And I also had, you know, it, it was a citizen that also had asked me about, you know, parking, you know, in that area and how many parking spaces that would be. So that's why I asked that.
All right, now let's talk a little bit about funding. There is an opportunity coming up. All right, Lisa, what you got?
Thank you. Um, quick question in regards to option C. As Sonya just stated, and as we're seeing that there's eight parking spaces as an option, my question, if the city were to uh, procure that particular piece of property, what would we do with the actual building? With the, with the, just as an issue, honestly, we can't answer the question. Oh, it's just literally that spot. It's not the act.
Yeah, it does, it would not include this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I, I have one last comment about, about the parking and we have many players here. We've got the city, we've got Carlton Carl, we have the community, and we have Mari that's gonna be fixing that two-story building. I think at this time, upon hearing comments from the public, we may have to have a workshop between the four groups. Why not have a workshop and have a sit-down and have a little sketchpad and write comments down? Because this is something that's come up. It's very, very abrupt and it's, it's, it frustrates people. So I, I don't know why we can't get the major player of the uh, downtown to be on, in on this, to, to get Mari and to get the city and to get the community. Get us all talking together where we can talk back and forth and have dialogue and have a workshop on this. That's my suggestion. Since it's such a harsh comments.
Right.
I, I don't know.
I, I see available parking down Jennings Street against that uh, that metal building that's not used right now also. It would probably just be parallel parking, but I think it's Jennings.
You mean the section that's blocked off with caution tape now? My mom, Jenny, it's got the caution tape beside the building?
Show, show us on the map, Jan, that we're looking at.
Uh, I don't see Jennings on there.
It's not on there. It's carpeted property as well.
Yeah.
Now there's a number of places that have no parking signs already put up by the owners of the people, the folks who.
And that, and that's a question I actually, that's actually a question that I have when it comes to, I fully understand um, on a city street, when your house fronts a city street, um, prohibiting anyone from, from the public blocking your driveway is certainly plausible, I mean, is certainly something that, that a property owner should have the right to do. My question, if, if it is a city street, does the property owner really have the right to uh, tell the public they cannot park there if the street is owned by the city?
I don't think so.
Believe that's correct. They can't. That doesn't make it any nicer for the people who live there.
Oh, it doesn't, but, but, but what does help is that.
It's a little bit different when you. Go ahead.
But I mean, that you're, I, I get it. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a give to give, and so, and it's, it's one of those where I would certainly rather deal with, and I'm setting myself up probably by saying this, I would certainly rather deal with the property owners um, who really don't want anybody parking in front of their house on the public thoroughfare. I would rather deal personally with those property owners than I would with the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen plus. Um, folks who opposed doing anything Guardiola, Guardiola Park.
Well, that's fine. You're probably gonna get an opportunity.
I know.
Let's uh, let's go talk a little bit about funding here. There, there was an opportunity coming up in twenty twenty-one. May of twenty twenty-one, there's competitive bidding for downtown revitalization, which is why we had Thomas go in there and, and. downtown revitalization, which is why we had Thomas go in there and, and, you know, put some stuff together. Basically, we could go in for a grant, but, uh, we're not in a position to do that, looks like in May of this coming year. So, uh, that'd probably have to wait. But if we can come up with a plan, uh, that, that, that we can agree on, on how to increase the parking downtown, then there is some opportunities for getting some assistance with that. They are competitive grants and they have a matching requirement that, that could be kind of stiff, but it's not unreasonable to think that we couldn't do that. And then the impact of sidewalk operations on the application to be listed for historic places. I've talked to Mari about that and, uh, he was checking, he hadn't got back with me, but he doesn't think that that's gonna be a a hangup. We would, we, we would not damage that activity. So you have given us the kind of discussion we had hoped for. We, we got some directions for the city. And that gets us through seven A. Moving on to seven B, traffic speeds along FM nineteen seventy-nine. So when last we left our heroes, we had received a number of calls and emails and complaints that traffic is exceeding the speed limit along FM nineteen seventy-nine, down there around the S curve that goes by the park, Alan Bates Park this year. Um, there's a bunch of actions we had taken to, to go off and, and work the issue through, through the past years and a half. We told you that the planned action was we would go have the police monitor traffic down there instead of reporting that, you know, we didn't see anybody that, that exceeded, was, was showing excessive speeds. I said, bring, bring in the actual speeds of each of the, of the people and go do it for ten hours in two-hour stints across a number of days and times of days to see what it looks like. And so if you go to that chart up there, we did that. And that's what it looks like. The, the blue line up there is thirty-five miles an hour. That's the speed limit through that section. It's forty, forty-five, forty-five bef- before that, uh, et cetera. And those are in the, the order of those, that data collection is in the order that we took it. You'll see that the first day was eleven and twenty-five and the last day was twelve and two. And the times, we scattered from seven-thirty in the morning all the way up to six PM at night. Get different times of the day to try to figure out what was going on. We did see the average over that timeframe, there was over a thousand cars. Average was thirty-two point one miles per hour. Uh, we had thirteen out of the thousand that, that hit forty miles per hour. And so the, if, if the question, and I guess the question posed by our citizens has been, or statements proposed by citizens, that people are exceeding the speed limit, the answer is yes, they are. Anything over that blue line is the number of people who have actually go over thirty-five miles an hour. But what the police and the courts have to deal with is, uh, do we have excessive speeds, which are generally ten miles an hour over the speed limit? Maybe five. Uh, and the answer to that question is no, we don't see anybody that has really excessive speed limits that are, should be going there. If you go to the next page, good. We split that up in directions as well. The one on the left, the westbound, are the ones heading from Highway eighty, going toward Staples. It's coming off of eighty. They get about a quarter of a mile run before, before it drops, the speed limit drops. And it actually is less than the total from the other, from the other way, the average from the other way. And it also is noted that none of those people ever get up to forty miles an hour coming around that way. It could be because of the shorter run to get up to speed. It could be that coming in from Staples direction, they get, they're more out in the country and they're used to moving faster. Uh, that's more of a straight shot before the, uh, the speed limit drops. But both of them were about the same. If we were gonna buy one traffic device, we obviously, I think, want to put it so that it faces that way, so the cars could see it coming out here. So with that in mind, we, we then have gone off and talked to Diana Schultz again about, uh, what can be done to go off and, and do this that we have. Haven't shown her the data, but I described it. Uh, first question was, can you, you know, somebody suggested speed bump. Can you put speed bumps down on texted out roads? Her answer was no. You can do it for temporary maintenance activities and the like, but you can't put them on there as speed reduction. Two. Uh, we gave her the, the, the issues that we had. She says that, uh, the day, the thirty, you know, what makes thirty-five miles an hour right is what the, the real question I put to her. Um, why is it thirty right? Why is it twenty-five right? What do you get? So, so the, the answer has been she can go to thirty if it's supported by a traffic study, the thirty-five miles an hour, of course, that was set originally with us, supported by a traffic study at the time. Uh, because of our questions, she has said that she has asked the traffic folks to come out and conduct the traffic study. I don't have a date on that yet, et cetera, to redo it, show us the data and explain it to her. So, uh, she's, she's attempting to go off and go make that happen.
Uh, quick question, Rob. Quick question. Uh, I've been kind of looking at these rumble strips and there's, there's various sizes. I've seen some that are very aggressive and some that are not aggressive. And I was just wondering, I mean, I'll see on, on six-twenty-one, all, all, all these county roads have them. And, uh, I don't know i- if it would reduce, I know if you had aggressive, if you had speed bumps, yes, for sure. And aggressive, uh, rumble strips, but if you had the real small ones, they're very, very faint. Uh, and I, I think, I mean, what I've seen, I was following a dump truck on six-twenty-one, and those truckers don't like those rumble strips. I mean, they, they go around them and everything. So, you know, I guess I'm not the expert here, but maybe we could ask her if you had a very low-profile rumble strip. If we're not trying to reduce speed, we're just trying to make the truck drivers or people aware that there's a curve. I know a lot of times they use them before stop signs and stuff to let people know that there's something coming up. That's just a question I had.
I understand, Mike. Here's what I would end up doing if I did that. Diana, are you sure you told me the truth in the last email that you sent me a week ago that you can't have rumble strips in the, on a texted out road? I mean, how many times do we want to go ask her before she did, and she tells us no before we say, oh, you mean no?
Well, they do them on other roads. They do, I do them on six-twenty-one.
She, she does. She explained that. She says that we can't do them as permanent speed reduction activities. They do them when they're doing maintenance or have some kind of a, a, uh, uh, construction activity. The ones you're speaking of on six-twenty-one are, are there because of the one-ten thing going in. But those will go away once they get all that finished. Okay, then, then we also talked to them about the used radar sign. She, she remembered that, that she gave us those answers, but those three things change quickly. And if we get to the point where we need to go, uh, buy those, please, once again, quiz her to make sure that we got, show her what make model we're gonna buy. And she'll make sure that, that, uh, she, that, that we, we get it straightened there on that. Uh, she told me that the speed limits on texted out roads are governed by the transportation of, code, code, of course, uh, uh, and that's the law that she's, she's basing this off of. And so she's gonna go redo a traffic study for that area and get back with us and tell us that. Over on there on the prior page, I didn't highlight it. It's somewhere in there that talks about they did, they set, oh, yeah, here it is. They said it, the, uh, speed limits are established according to current state and federal guidelines and are based on engineering speed studies founded on a statistical model defined as eighty-fifth percentile speed. So basically, when they set the, I believe what that means is when they set the speed to thirty-five miles an hour, they expect some people to be, go over that, that the, the, they set it at the eighty-fifth percentile, knowing full well that, that they're gonna get a, that we get a grab from that, that we've got. So the bottom line on that one is that we have tried to go off and, and re-trigger one of these studies and we'll go do it. If citizens contact us and say, hey, you got speeders out there, uh, I guess our answer is yes, there are people that go with the speed limit by one or two miles an hour, two or three miles an hour, uh, but there's no excessive speeds out there that we've seen. And we studied it to a fairly well. And until we get the official texted out study in, you know, further actions on this ought to be just on hold. That answer what everybody remembers from that thing. Any questions by the council? All right. What's that?
No, it's just thank you for doing all the work as far as, uh, checking on the speed limit and everything over there by the park. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we're now at, uh, agenda item seven C, which is a rolling review of ordinance one fifty-five. That's what we agreed would be the next one to go off and do, do, look at the use table. The definitions and use table, because the definitions and the use table are together. We, of course, and, and Lisa, I'm sure chime in here in a minute, but, uh, we've had lots of inquiries over the past year about, uh, what's allowed and not allowed of the different zones in the city. One of the problems the city has is, is that, the city staff has, is that a lot of times people are asking us stuff that really is not defined well in our, in our ordinance, such as bed and breakfast. And it is in the, it is in the actual use table, but it is not in the definition of what that is. And so we, we, we constantly turn the short-term rentals or, you know, boarding houses, but that we, we need to, we need to fix that for sure. Uh, we have farm, ranch and orchard identified in the use table. It's, but it is not in the definition, so we don't really know what that is. However, there is a definition about agriculture, but that's not the use table. So we really need to try to solidify on, on what that is.
Right, yes, but I want to a- add to that, that not only is the definition not defined, but in the table itself, it says that farm, ranch and orchard is permitted in R one, but it is not permitted in R two. So not only are we, need to talk about the definition of farm, ranch and orchard, we need to talk about the specific or, uh, the, the, the use in, in, or the lack of use in R two.
Right now, we're talking definition.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Okay, uh, the other one that I spotted that I didn't quite understand is communication towers. Those are not allowed per the use ta- table except in commercial and
That's true.
industrial zone, I believe.
Of which industrial.
We don't have it. We, we have no industrial zone. So it's just in commercial areas. However, uh, there's been questions about adding communication devices to the water towers, which are in non-commercial zones. So, uh, we need some, we need some help with that one. And then we need, uh, bar tavern versus a restaurant, uh, that neither one is defined in the definition section, but they are in the use tables and we, we need to help the city with, with some of that. Mobile food vendors, uh, doesn't exist in the use table and isn't defined. So that, that sounds like, okay, you know, it doesn't happen. Except we got an ordinance that allows for it, but we don't really ever, ever sit down and tell what zone that we're gonna allow that to happen in. So we need, we need to try to fix that. And then one of the bigger ones that is, that is glaring recently is, is an RV park. Neither campground is listed in the use table. RV park is not, uh, neither is defined. So people have counseled, the city staff, we go, well, is an RV park really just a campground in disguise? What, what we have? So, so we need to go help get those definitions done. And, uh, so out of the sixty-eight uses that are in the use table, fifty-five of them are not defined. They have no discernible, you know, no written definition for this is what we mean by, by the, some, of course, college or university or, you know, doesn't take much to define one of those and it doesn't take much to, to, to know that, what you're talking about. But these others that I've listed certainly need help. And, uh, how do we want to go about, about addressing that?
And I see line, line three there. Thank you so much for including that.
So that, uh, uh, so let's go, go to the updates, the use table, the other problems that we've seen, the questions about RV parks I just described. Uh, we need, we need to do something with that. We need to, to add something to short-term rentals and clarity that, that can clarify the difference between boarding house, bed and breakfast and short-term rentals and loft apartments. Can't be as simple as saying this is a long-term rentals. This is, you know, intended to be greater than thirty days or less than thirty days or whatever, but, uh, and we need to add bed and breakfast to the definitions and the, even if it's just a qualifier to the, one of the other areas that's in the table. Uh, yeah, Sam, you talked about farm, ranch and orchard, uh, there. And then we need to add mobile food vendors. Those are the things that I know we need to go, go fix. And then Lisa or somebody sent this in. Did you do?
Yeah, I put, I put it together.
Okay. The, 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 the one correction about three, though, is that you're talking about R four and it is actually R two is the line item there. Uh, back to that slide. It needs to be corrected. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, when we're getting to the use table thing, it, it's not just one zone type or another. It's unknown whether the decisions were explicit to omit items intentionally, or if they were just omitted as an oversight. And without that clarification, it becomes difficult like we have with the.
You're suggesting, you're suggesting that we put another code in there of NP for not permitted or, you know, X for can't do it or something.
So it would, it would be, it would, yes, it would, it would, it would help or have a statement that explicitly states if, if there's something not, if there's not a P or an S, it's explicitly excluded. I think there's language about that.
Yeah.
But given the inconsistencies where we're that, that are being brought up, the rationale between as a farm or ranch, orchard permitted in R one but not R two, that, that doesn't seem to have a lot of, um, continuity from one zone to the next when they have similar uses.
And then also I think it sends like a clear defined, yes, you can, no, you cannot. I know that in New Broncos, if your, uh, home is in the flood, uh, in the floodway, you cannot have an Airbnb in the city of New Broncos. They have it clearly defined in their ordinances that says you, you cannot have it. So it's, I think that that would help out a lot if it's yes or no.
Okay. That's good.
If I may, fair, I, I would like to propose, um, just sort of a systematic way for us to move forward with just looking at all of the discrepancies and undefined items. Um, first and foremost, I would like to see that we would define what is there first. And then after we have, in, in those definitions, there, there's in essence industry, industry standard, if you will. Um, you know, we, we, be it that, um, our city attorney does this type of work or our city administrator, um, that's not for me to. That's not for me to determine specifically, but I'm just thinking about a systematic progression of this work. So define what we have already listed first. Then the discrepancies that are there where it's in the use table but not in a definition or we have an ordinance for it, but it's not even listed in the use table, such as food vendors, to clean up that part as well. To just make what we have line up and confirm itself instead of, what is the word, instead of contradict itself.
Okay, let's go through the material that I thought one of you, either Jared or you, prepared for this thing. Let's finish doing that and then we'll come back and talk about steps forward. Go ahead, Jared, do this thing.
Great.
All right, so this one, I just want to dive into this one as a specific example. When we look at commercial land use regulations and want to, want to folk, I want to highlight commercial land use as a general problem, and then focus on the specific issue of RV parks. Because not two or three months go past that the city receives an inquiry regarding RV parks. I don't, that's nothing new. I think it's been happening for quite a long time. Yeah. So as a mayor was saying, the current land use regulations do not specifically address RV park land uses. Campgrounds are considered in the use table, but they're not defined to the point that we've made. References are to the C1 Commercial District, C2 Heavy Commercial District, and then the use table, which is what we're discussing tonight. And just because of the immediacy of this issue, I just kind of want to walk through a couple of questions with the council. You know, go through each question with each individual to kind of get a sense of where we're at in terms of scoping what an ordinance would look like or what the modifications would look like within the use table and those commercials. So the first question is, should the city define commercial land use regulations for RV parks? For me, it makes sense that an RV park would be considered a commercial activity. So it would be defined in the commercial land use regulations. But I hope the answer to this is yes, but I'll pass it off to the council members. And I'll go in turn. Should the city define commercial land use regulations for RV parks? I'll go to
Yes.
Mr. Clinton. Yes. And Councilmember Villalobos?
Yeah.
Councilmember Shell Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bunker?
Yes. Aren't there already some kind of state regulations that we can refer to for this?
There might be like health and safety regulations regarding RV parks potentially. I have not looked into that. This is, this is directly related to where that land use is permitted within the city limits. Should we regulate that use?
And that question really is for the council to consider. That's, that's what our position is. How do we want to see things move forward?
I mean, do we want, do we want to just handle every RV park that comes in as a fall from the sky, blue sky thing that we have to grapple with? Or we wanted to find terms to regulate that use within the city?
I got a point here. I've got a point here.
Yeah.
That's somebody else.
My point, you know, as you know, RV parks as far as floodway areas are not really allowed in San Marcos and they're not allowed in the county. So, I mean, I could understand to find the commercial land use right, but we should not allow any RV parks to be built in the floodway.
You're jumping my question too. So with that statement, I'm going to assume that you believe that we should define commercial land use for RV parks. Okay.
Okay.
And Councilmember Bunker, is there something I can help answer for you to, on this question?
I'm still thinking. I'm going to say no for now.
Okay. That's, that's fair. So given that the sense of council at this point is that we should consider land use regulations, should RV parks be permitted and if so, where? I think we just heard from Councilmember McClabb that if the first part of that question is, I don't know, but definitely not near the river. I'll go back to you, Councilmember McClabb, if you want to first part of that question and then, and then talk about where they should be permitted if they are permitted.
Okay, for, let's go back. For example, summer breeze. I was not against that at all. I thought it'd be great for the city. However, as you're aware, we're changing our flood, our floodplain maps from the 2012 to the 2000, eventually 15. And that's the one reason they backed out of the deal is because they realized that they were in the floodway and floodplain. So that's, that's the main issue for RV parks for me. I mean, if, if it's in a suitable place, yes, like we thought summer breeze would be. But after the, after the floodplain maps are changed, it's a different ballgame. So.
So if I understood that, your thought is that they should not be allowed within floodplain areas? Within the floodplain?
Correct.
Okay. And then I'll go to you.
As I'm looking at the map here, we do have large sections of R2 land that is adjacent to Highway 80 and is also adjacent to commercial land. So it would seem like in some of the larger tracts of R2 that are not in the floodway, that we could consider having an RV park in the sections of R2 as well as the commercial zone.
Included in R2 and commercial. Okay. Councilmember Villalobos?
Same as Sam.
Because this is all R2, all of this land here along 80 and going up towards Sky, Skyview, correct?
Here, I'll pull.
That's not correct.
Okay.
There, here's a
I think he's going to grab a map maybe.
And then I just want to just like elaborate on something else once he comes back about RVs and
He's going to bring, bring the map in for us here.
Here's, here's a section of the city up there.
People can see that. So that's R2 out there. Pink one is R2.
Pink area is R2, green is a commercial C.
Oh, I was confused, yeah, because it was orange and
That's, that's the ETJ map.
Oh, okay. So I see the pink is R2. Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Real quick question. If we receive the new, have they adopted the new floodplain maps, the county?
It happens after the, after the first of the year.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
So right now, Jared, where, like if, if they wanted to do an RV park, where would it be?
It's not addressed. So the best, the best method that we would have to address that would is a question that the mayor described. Do we consider an RV park a campground? And then we would go to the use table to look at where that would be applied. The, I think there was some debate on whether that a campground and RV park are similar land uses.
It is similar, but RV park incorporates impervious surfaces. Oil and gas depositing down on impervious surfaces that you would not find as much in campground sites.
Right now, we only allow campgrounds in C, in commercial zone, C1, which is all the green stuff. That's what's in there today.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on, so like, say you have property that's by the river right now. So technically, you can have up to three RVs on that property. It's from what I was, what I was told.
If you, if your own personal RVs, I believe that that's fine.
So for your own personal RVs or
Depending. So, so the floodplain rules, you know, for temporary structures, I think that has a limit of 180 days. So if it's in the floodplain, it might be different than if you're just in a regular R1 or R2 zone.
So with being able to have up to three for personal use or for your guests, what constitutes how many RVs makes a campground?
That, that would be part of the questions where we get to is how we define it. But as you define it within yourself right now, when you conceptualize this, should that be allowed? And if so, where is the question? And what, what you had mentioned earlier is that what Councilmember Clinton said was in C1 or R2 zones, RV parks, however that we would define them, would be, would be permitted.
Unless the R2 is, is in the floodway or the floodplain.
Unless it's in the floodplain. Okay.
Yeah.
That's probably a pretty big change. I mean, that's a one thing, if we add a qualifier that says campground, comma, RVs, RV park, that is already allowed in zones C-green, C1. But if you do it in R2s, you know, down here in this around Southeast River Road, most of it's agricultural grandfather stuff.
Or in the floodway.
You go out to West Ridge and you think, now, those people bought those properties because they wanted to be, you know, a single-family residence, right? It may be in a, in a manufacturing home, but it's a single-family residence. And then if you go the other direction, the peak area down there, I don't think anybody really interested in having an RV park down there, but I could be wrong. So we've got to be careful when you're, when you're doing this. This was, this would require a major polling of all the R2 areas if we were going to go do that. Can be done.
And then
The real question is, where do y'all think the RVs ought to go?
I think we start to get to Councilmember Bunker, Councilmember Shell Allen. Let's go to Councilmember Bunker.
We're we're doing this because somebody is requesting an RV park in an R2 zone, correct?
Somebody is requesting RV parks within the city limits at least every three or four months. Somebody's acquiring about it.
Really? Oh. Then, yes, we need to look into regulations. I thought we were just talking about one property.
No, this is conceptually across the city to try to come up with a standard that we would want to apply.
Okay. Are we like talking about accommodating winter Texans? Or is it just in camping or week camping, two-week camping?
That would not be for us to determine. What we would be here to determine is if we foresee and or would like to permit RV parks by definition that we've not yet determined to be located in what areas inside the city limits? And if so, yeah, what, what areas we would, we would be willing to allow them to, to go? That's, that's the number one question.
And so we don't have to stick with our current zoning map. If we want, if there was, we could come up with a new zone or, you know, R5, a C3. We could describe it however we want, but it's easiest to just tack on what we already have there. That's for sure. But we're not constricted to just do that. Councilmember Shell Allen, did you have a comment on, on where they, should RV parks be permitted? And if so, where?
Well, you know, my first thought, I certainly agree with Councilmember McClabb in relation to the fact that in a floodway, absolutely not. I've been, I've been around long enough to see that decline multiple times. And I agree with reason. At the same time, they still come. And so if we do not determine where and we don't have that definition, then they're going to find some kind of loophole. So whether it be along Highway 80, which by default at this point is relatively commercial, except for the, Jared, you don't have up the city map anymore, but except for that area that is R2. If, if, if we would consider, you know, that was very close to where Summer Breeze wanted to, to put in. And so if in fact we thought we might want to permit RV parks and our campgrounds, I personally believe they are different by definition. I'll just throw one out there. If in fact we think we want to permit that in that particular area, we would need to designate it. And as a big picture, I just want to say this. You know, this is the stuff. This is the nuts and bolts of what a city council and a planning and zoning commission really, really needs to do at a minimum every 10 years. We have language, we have terminology today that didn't exist 10, 13, 12 years ago. Short-term rental being one of them. And so in order for us to stay ahead or at least with the times and what is coming around, we have to do these things. Like we were talking about earlier in regards to the parking, how Councilmember Clinton mentioned this is just hit us like that. This is the kind of stuff that we have to stay ahead of. We might not like it right now, but if we don't define it, they're going to figure out a way. So I can, I can, I call this guided growth. So there we go.
So where?
Is the green, are you saying do it commercial and swap there?
I left it relatively ambiguous. Other people to weigh in with their opinions. Not being in a floodway, number one, I think is critical. So that takes it pretty much off the river. So anyone that has any concern about RV parks being on the river, it's my opinion that's not an appropriate place. So then the next viable place would be along Highway 80. As our map is designated currently, that is either commercial or R2. My thought is, when I'm looking at R2 specifically in, off of West Ridge in the pink that we're all looking at on the, on the screen, would I want to see an RV park, you know, two, three, four blocks back in that area? I don't really know that the residents would necessarily go for that. But potentially right on Highway 80, that might be a viable place for the council to consider designating an option if in fact any of those property owners so chose.
And maybe, I agree with you, Lisa, maybe a good thing to attach our floodplain ordinance along with that saying, you cannot develop an RV park in a, in a floodway or floodplain area. Just the same example as Summer Breeze, you know, what they went through, which was going forward and unfortunately, they realized they, I think they were in a flood, floodway. Some of the property was. So that should be attached if we do something like that.
Okay. I think, I think we'll come back to the specific zone and locations. Just defining that as, as we go along. But I think we got a decent sense of where the council is on that question. Next question is how we should define RV parks. I know, Lisa, you're the one who mentioned that you have a different definition for campground or RV park. Would you care to share your thoughts on how we might want to define RV parks? And I guess to other extent campground?
I do. I don't know if my connection is stable enough, if I'm able to be heard, but I definitely believe that campgrounds and RV parks are different. In my personal opinion, a campground is a tent pitching situation where you don't provide hookups, hookups to city utilities. Hookups to city utilities, be it water, electric and or wastewater. If it is a campground, you might provide water spigots, and that might be all. Um, but I do believe that they are are different by definition.
Okay. And so an RV park would be any facility that would provide electric and waste. Water, I guess, sewer, uh, hookups, disposal services, or something along those lines.
And possibly.
And septic or something.
And possibly a restroom and shower area.
Okay.
Well, uh, an RV is a recreational vehicle to trailer typically or a motorhome, and a campground usually have tents, you know. Typically primitive camping or.
Agree.
Yeah, so that's pretty much.
So we we will make the distinction the. The living quarter someone staying in. So you know, a a soft sided sided tent would be in a campground and then a hard sided. I don't know, vehicle or. Equipment would be a RV.
Or something with wheels, you know.
Something with wheels.
More, you know. You know, because most places have primitive camping and they have what they call full hookups with an RV, you know. You have places like that have both.
Okay.
I agree with Lisa's definition of the difference.
Okay.
So I I think that they should be defined separately.
And Councilmember Villalobos?
It's it's the same. Um, but just like how everybody was voicing so strongly about the RVs by the rivers. I mean. I've gone to towns and they've had like RVs and uh camping and it was like respectable and. I think like the stigma like of the signs, like the no drunk tubers, like automatically if you're saying that, okay, like that would be. You know, something that our town could viably do and possibly there would be land lucid usage for that. I think like the stigma. Of it has already just kind of stained any type of like open mindedness about even considering that. Could it? Could it be done here? I think I think it could be done, you know, I think like, you know, because I I go camping, I go hiking, I. I see how it's done, but like I said, I think that the stigma of it, like the no drunk tubers, no, like the type of people that it would bring. And the type of atmosphere that it would bring just already has kind of like, you know, tarnished it. But could it be done? Yeah. Could there be campgrounds with RVs? Yeah, it could be done.
Uh, who have I got to? Uh, Councilmember Bunker.
So.
How you should define RV parks?
Yeah, they need to be defined.
Do you have any recommendations for how we define them?
Well. I agree. RV parks should have some facilities. You know, that uh Councilmember Alan described. So yes, I think some.
Okay. And then I want to go to the next question. If we define RV parks as providing hookup facilities. Then what additional regulations? And this might not be a in a land use context, it could be in a a business regulation, but. So I I won't put the engaging in that conversation either way when I look at it. What kind of regulations parameters would we want to put on RV parks? Is there any? Is it laissez faire? You know, if you provide electrical hookup, you can come in and. The rules or is there some rules or boundaries want to put on it? I'll go go to you.
Uh, well, it would depend. Yes, we would have to say how many RVs are permitted, say, per acre or half acre acre. There needs to be a limit then for us to say. How many we would allow per the size of of the land. So we need to come up with an equation. Of how many we would allow. And so we would not have something that would be very dense and. Would max out the the use of of that land. So the regulations I I should be should be the density.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Villalobos, any ideas, thoughts on this issue?
How how they should be? Um, I mean, well, definitely you have to take into consideration like. Where it is, is it going to be concrete pad? Is it going to be like, uh, is it going to be, you know, asphalt? Is it going to be gravel? Is it going to be, you know, more uh just ground cover? Um, you know, the hookups, uh, the the waste, uh, where you're going to deposit. Um, you know, your waste, same thing for the for the camp for the campgrounds, for tent, for tent camping. I mean, if it's primitive. That means where's the waste going to go if it's primitive? So then you also have to have regulations as far as the camping and it.
Leave no trace.
Kind of goes. Yeah, twofold. Although they're separate, still the areas are going to have to be defined of how big the pad is going to be where you're going to leave it. But also if it's going to be something that we as a city are saying that, yes, this is permitted. We also have to say that you have to have, you know, a place to, you know, use the restroom. You have to have water. You have to have electricity.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Bunker, any idea thoughts on regulations that should exist regarding RV parks?
From what I understand, I think there's a lot of T E T E C Q regulations that uh RV parks already have to abide by. So and I think some of those, I I'm not sure. I just read this thing about guidelines to RV parks. Where there were certain guidelines that people who have an RV park, they have to follow those guidelines. You know, like having restroom facilities and making sure everything is managed. Uh, properly and correctly and safely and sanit, you know, everything is sanitized. As far as the number, Sam, you know, that this would be a business. So whatever. The business needs, you know, that the number really kind of depends on how this if this business can survive. So I'm not sure limiting the number of. Parks, I mean, uh, or the density. Maybe a range. I don't know. I don't know how to do it. I'm not that much of a business person, so. Um, that, you know. You may want to comment against me or something or try to educate me better. But um, I'm not sure. What is the question again?
What land use regulations or we could even consider business regulation? What regulations should exist regarding developing RV parks within the city limit? I I if you if you're done, I'll I'll go ahead and go to Councilmember um Clark.
Yes, sir. Uh, you know, a lot of times you remember the I go back to the summer breeze, remember the density they were talking about? And the reason they wanted to go there is because we had our 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 sewer system or our evaporation pond. So they're going to be kind of limited by if you're going to put a try to put a high density, you're you can't really use septic tanks. So there's going to be there's going to be restrictions there, you know, if it depends what size of a RV park they're doing are going to be limited. By, you know, a septic tank or if they could hook up to our city sewer. You know.
Okay. I think. Any other any other thoughts on this?
Well, electricity or water would not really be an, I mean, we talked about that with Summer Breeze. That was a massive development, you know, they were that that the only thing we really control really is the is the sewer. You know, they can get their electric from Bluebonnet or their water from Martindale Water Supply, but I think the limiting factor would be the wastewater.
Okay. And then uh Councilmember Shalalan, any any thoughts regarding the regulations? Did we lose her?
She said her connection was not was fading.
Yep, yep, we lost her. Yeah, some of the things that.
Operation.
Yeah, ours I was going to get to that hours of operation and onsite management might be something that council might want to consider. And whether. You know, if if there's additional facilities, is that beyond the minimal utility hookups? Is that? Something that needs to be regulated, um, you know, pools or whatever? Is that a specific use in order to have that sort of facility versus a permitted use? Um, as we get into the kind of the land use items. Hours. Yeah. So so we got we had a comment regarding length of like length of stay. So that that's one thing I know Lisa or Councilmember Shalalan has talked about. Is length of stays. It capped it, you know. Snowbirds coming down and it's one hundred and twenty days. Is it? Short term, less than thirty days? Is it operate more like a a campground ish? Or it's, you know, a week, two weeks maximum. Um, those are things that we might want to consider as well. All right, so with my goal was to get us thinking of these things. I think what what I heard from council on the other land use. Items was go ahead and start defining them. I and. I don't know. I I want to get a sense of whether it makes sense for us to take us to for the for me to go through and. Start changing it and then bring the council for input or does the council want to partake in the creative writing process?
Uh, I suggest we all seem to do better when we come in and and can say, yeah, you got the right rocker. No, you haven't. Uh, there's fifty five of 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 the terms. Currently listed in the use table that are not defined. So that's someplace to really go start to doing fifty five thing. The RV one is is a issue that is currently before the council, and so we need to. Decide what to do about that on on the use table changes. My recommendation is for somebody. Jared to 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 go off and take the time to go try to to come up with those definitions. And a proposed changes to the use table as as proposals and then. And that would include the not permitted change. To 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 fill in the table entirely. What I what we're talking about is the table looks like like that. So all these blank spaces up there under one fifty five, oh ninety six, C three. We make a statement in the ordinance that says if it doesn't have any number, if it doesn't have a a letter in there, it's not permitted. And Jared's point earlier was, is is that really true or is without putting something in there? Is that an oversight or is that really true? Is that what we want? So. His suggestion was to make another. Yeah, so so I think that that his proposal of changes should be. The definitions, the use table changes that we've kind of loosely discussed here. As well as that not permitted identification activity in there. And then come back and whenever that's ready and and. Say, okay, here here's the proposed changes. At that point in time, the council can. Provide inputs will be a step away from actually making changes. Now, I do believe that. Changing the zoning ordinance is going to require a number of different public hearings, et cetera. So we would. Go through a couple of rounds or another round of council. Yeah, this is what we think it ought to be. And at that point in time. Have public hearings to 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 allow anybody that that wants to know about it to.
Yeah, I think what uh once the use table is is updated, you can. Work backwards from that use table to update other sections within the uh the zoning ordinance and then. If we want to get really tricky, start start looking at remapping uh the zones and the districts. And concerned, you know, the comment was made earlier, you know, do you allow R two? We'll get into the comments when we're getting to the use table, but when we start making distinctions between, well, this area of R two is okay and that. But that our area of R two is is not okay because of where it's located, it's next to Highway eighties or next to the rivers and next to this or that. That's those type of conversations are naturally going to lead to. Redistricting the zones potentially.
All right, any other comments on that item? I think we've gotten some good inputs there. That brings us to section eight, future item. We've got a number of rolling reviews, road repair procedures that Mike has asked for with with. A review, and we're going to wait till after we talk to Ed, Terry, and gang. Review of Shelby parking area. What the heck would we want to do there?
Uh, this had to do with long term maintenance and ownership, I think.
And then, uh, yes, but I also wanted to um add, I know our list is dwindling down. But I wanted to add on there, I wanted to, instead of the dark sky just being a resolution, I want it to be an ordinance. And then also I want to make sure that um our citizens are aware that our. Our our ordinance that's going to take into effect, it was supposed to be a year for dogs being chained. That we need to start making sure that our citizens know that there should not be animals chained in their front or backyard. That should be coming up.
I I have one future item as well. Uh, when I was on the board of Martindale Water Supply. I worked with the board uh to try and get some fire hydrants at Hobson Ranch. Through my discussions with Steve Fonville, he related to me, uh, told me recently that. Through our discussions, he is willing and ready to start installing fire hydrants at Hobson Ranch, starting in the spring. Installing one and then two more uh every two months after the spring. So he wants to do a total of. Three, maybe four fire hydrants in Hobson Ranch. This would assist him in his uh directional flushing. And to scour the water main, the meters, the fire hydrants cost six thousand four hundred dollars apiece, and they're willing to. Take on the whole cost of these four hydrants.
Why is this a future item?
Well, because we need to talk. I mean, unless we just say, okay, do it.
We don't have anything to do with it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then I'm just telling you then he wants to do that then.
He. I know in the past, I thought there's something to do with uh water towers and pressures and.
That's.
Okay, but. Saying then that that has been.
Mike McClabb, we got you on there. You sent a note about getting the grant advisory commission. It's on the list. We just haven't got to it yet.
All right. Appreciate it.
And uh, what's that?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And we have, that brings us to item nine, adjournment.
Nine thirty eight.
And we have a second.
A second.
And do we have Sam? You ready to quit here?
Sir, I I say yes.
And.
Yes, please.
Lisa is gone, but we'll. We'll show that it's four oh for adjournment. Thank you all for coming.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
Be safe with COVID. It's bad right now.
Oh, I've seen that.